You guys have a council meeting tonight?
Not tonight.
No, just a special.
An executive session.
Oh, okay.
We just love meetings.
When I worked for the state, I remember saying...
Okay, we're ready. Ready? On record.
I want to commence the Joint City Council Planning Commission Workshop, August 7th, 2019. It's 1:10 PM. Oh, it's October 7th, sorry about that. Should we make introductions, starting here?
Steve Griffiths, Planning Commissioner.
Lenny Nelson, Planning Commissioner.
Lindsay Zehmle, Planning and Community Development Director.
Diane Coos, City Council.
Mitch Parsons, City Council.
Riley Hoakland, City Council.
Deanna Hinton, City Council.
Ron Chandler.
Anne Marie Skinner, Senior Planner, Vice Mayor Planning Commissioner.
Miles Schlesinger, City Planning Commissioner.
Rick Mark, City Council.
Judy Casper, City Council and Council President. Kathy Steer, City Recorder.
Richard Appelshell, City Attorney.
Jean Sprey, City Parks Recreation Director. During the work session, we'll discuss three land use ordinances, the sign ordinance, the design standard ordinance, and the villages at Cascadehead plan ordinance. The discussion will include a brief history of the ordinances, the provisions of each ordinance, and the next steps. And there's a request for, okay, blah, blah, blah. This meeting is a work session only and generally does not include public comment. And we have public portion, also communications.
Only what's on there.
Okay, so we now begin our ordinance, the sign ordinance, the latest draft.
Okay. Just a little bit of preliminary information. So we have a PowerPoint, but I don't think we're going to use it. I think we're going to just put the packet up on the screen. Apparently, there was a little confusion on who received the packet, who didn't, who has a laptop in front of them, who doesn't, who printed up 137 pages and who didn't. So anyway, so we're just going to put this up. It may slow the discussion just a little bit as we're trying to, as we're trying to get to the page where we're talking about these. Helping me a lot in this discussion will be Anne Marie, our senior planner. She has been working on this since, I think, the first day you were hired. And Lindsay will be helping as well, but Anne Marie's really going to be the workforce in this. And any questions that I run into that I don't know, I'm just going to turn to her and say, "Help." And, but as mentioned, we've got three ordinances. We're going to discuss each of these for a little bit more than an hour. Our intent is to finish this by 5:00. The City Council does have a City Council meeting at 5:00 PM. And for our councilors, I promised that we would finish it by 6:00. So we figure five hours with staff is plenty. Okay, so the sign ordinance. A little bit of history on this. We actually began work on this over a year ago, in 2018. And there were really two issues that we were dealing with when we started. And like most things that happen with us, is that two things lead into many things. And it's not as easy and as straightforward. Those two things were content, especially as it relates to flags and the now the law of the land, which case law, which states that our sign ordinance has to be content neutral. As all of you might know, that applies to things such as the American flag and any other type of thing, open, closed, eat at Joe's, Joe's Spick and Span, whatever you might want to have on your flag, it has to be content neutral. The other issue that we wanted to deal with was feather banners, or teardrop banners, or portable banners, whatever you want to call them, and the number that we now have that are being used throughout our community. As we put together an ordinance and start, some ordinances that are already adopted, this one that we're working on, and visited with the businesses, there were some things that came out of that that were significant. One of those was the consistency within the ordinances for different zones. Now, the sign ordinance that we're going to be dealing with today, that does not pertain to all zones, only some of them. So one of the comments that we heard from businesses, make it consistent throughout the city. The second was content, especially as it pertained to the American flag and its placement, where it can go and where it cannot go. And the third is that very issue of placement of signs on Highway 101. The original ordinance that we began putting together patterned itself after ODOT's regulations, which says that you can't put signs in the right-of-way. That proved to be a little bit problematic because there's no such thing as a straight right-of-way in the city. Some people own out into the road, some people own their sidewalk, others do not. And so you would have where you could place one right out on the sidewalk on the curb and another right next to it you could not. That was an issue that manifested itself, especially as we started looking at enforcement of this type of an ordinance. To, well, we'll come to that in just a minute. So the second part of that issue on the placement is the fact that our ordinance is designed for the whole city, whatever zone that street is on. But we have one big, huge, major road running right through the middle of our city that doesn't belong to us, Highway 101. And so we began to talk with ODOT about whether or not we could be the controlling regulation as it pertains to signs. And the answer was no unless. Okay? So I recently received a letter from Brian Moore, who is one of the ODOT officials. A week or so ago, we spent quite a bit of time talking about this, and this is the follow-up letter he gave. "The city's authority to impose restrictions by the city code on state highway right-of-way so the city can enforce or permit things like advertising, flags, tables, planters, or other items businesses would display along the sidewalks. While I can understand the city's desire to manage activities within their boundaries, it can be challenging when those activities occur on the state highway right-of-way. By law, ODOT is responsible for all state highway right-of-way. This is commonly referred to as road authority. Transportation Commission has all authority over the state highway system, and state statutes state that no person may build, place, or put, or alter the use of the state highway without ODOT's permission. It's common for cities to update or adopt new codes, however, it can raise concerns if they were to adopt codes that are different than the state regulations for the operation and use of the state highway." That's the problem that we're facing, is that the state is the road authority. And as long as it's the road authority, we have to abide by their rules and regulations. Now, the problem that that creates is that we might have two sets of rules and regulations. This is actually an issue we have been dealing with for years. This is not a new issue. And the solution to it was rather simple. We didn't enforce it, okay? We didn't enforce the sign ordinance well along Highway 101. And so you had things that were being placed in the right-of-way that just had to look the other way, whether it was by us or by the state. When we did try to enforce it, that's when we ran into problems with things like you're going, you're telling people to take down their American flags, the inconsistency of what the right-of-way is. So that's the no. Here's the unless. As we discussed, one of the ways to address this would be for the city to take over jurisdiction of the sidewalk or land, as may be appropriate. This would more clearly establish the city as the authority which would allow them to establish standards and management, and manage the property as they see fit. So in other words, we would go into an intergovernmental agreement, from the front of the curb back. That would then become the cities to regulate, maintain, expand. There would be much more discussions in it, so that we don't assume liability for ADA improvements that have to be made. But that's the way to get around this, so that we would no longer have an ODOT enforcement. This is also not new to us. We actually have an agreement with ODOT through TAFT for this very thing. It begins at, it begins at Seletz Bay Park, and then on both sides, we have taken jurisdictional authority up to just past Sapphire Gems. Now, there's one distinction in that between what Brian wrote and the agreement. The agreement is for one foot behind the back of the curb, and then it goes back four yards. Now, I specifically asked the question of ODOT, would this be the front of the curb? And they said yes. So we have experience where we are already in charge of maintaining the sidewalks and everything else in TAFT as the jurisdictional authority, yes.
What was the motivation for the city to acquire that authority in TAFT? And why wasn't it done for the whole city?
It was based upon an improvement project for the road. Specifically, it was the median that was put in. And so it was all tied to that, and the boundaries of it were the boundaries of the project.
Ron, can we make note that Mary Anderson joined us at 1:14?
So as, even though that these meetings, these work meetings are not, are not ones where you're voting, part of what we're trying to get is the sense of where do we go with this sign ordinance from here? Should we be looking at trying to do something with the state for the entire Highway 101? Do we continue just as we have been doing? We have found that enforcement just causes all sorts of difficulties for our staff. And quite frankly, my own personal feeling is that the state has the jurisdictional authority, they should also be enforcing their own laws. And we should not be ones enforcing state laws as it pertains to signs.
In my vast experience of 27 years here, ODOT won't use their authority either. They may tell you they will.
That may or may not be true, but my feeling is it's up to them.
Well, then you end up with what you have now, which may or may not be acceptable.
Exactly, exactly. That is true. And so that's, that's all the mix of the discussion as we go through this. Yes?
The act of claiming jurisdiction, is that a difficult thing? Or do they just roll over?
It would come through an intergovernmental agreement, which means it would have to be approved by the City Council and would have to be approved by the State Commission.
Outside of signs, we, the police, I'm sure, enforce state laws. Do you know what I mean? So it's not outside of the city's responsibility to enforce state law. I understand we're talking about signs, but it's not something that the city doesn't do.
That's true. That's true. I'm focusing on signs.
I understand, but we also do enforce that and keep, you know, it is our responsibility to do that, so.
That's true.
Let's keep that in mind.
The question is, can we establish restrictions that are worse severe than what else are restrictions?
Well, if it's, if we assume responsibility from the curb back, you know, or...
Well, that's, that's, right, that's what we're talking about.
And just some clarification, ODOT's restrictions are, there are no signage allowed.
Okay, so let's jump in a little bit, and we're going to talk, well, so we're going to talk first of all about what is a sign, okay? That's the beginning point of any kind of ordinance. What is a sign? You'll find it will be on packet page 3 through 9. They are definitions. I am not going to read all of the definitions, but I'm just going to highlight what they are. Now, why this is significant is because we regulate signs. We do not regulate things that are not signs, okay? So these are your signs. Permanent signs, again, I'm not going to read what the definitions are unless you want me to. Pole signs, portable signs, projecting signs, reflecting signs, roof signs, rope lights, sandwich board signs, sidewalk signs, temporary signs, utility signs, vehicle signs, video signs, wall signs, and window signs. Those are all defined as a sign, which means this ordinance regulates every one of those. Now, for what is not a sign, and these would be items that we do not regulate under this ordinance, they include internal, integral signs, incidental signs, grave markers, decorations, government signs, one directly illuminated or non-illuminated sign exceeding 1 and 1/2 square feet, signs displayed on a bus or vehicle, handheld signs, interior signs, an exterior sign erected next to an entrance or exit provides the sign is no more than four square feet, signs located on sports stadiums or athletic fields, original art displays. Now, some of you may be familiar with Sapphire Gems' new painting on the side of their building down in TAFT. That would be considered as an original art display, so it is unregulated. Window signs internally or externally illuminated, signs incorporated into ATMs, fuel pumps, or vending machines, and signs not legible nor intended to be viewed from the travelway. Those are signs that, those, I'm sorry, those are items that are not considered to be signs. Therefore, they are not regulated.
Small point, I couldn't find a definition for incidental signs of that definition.
I'm going to turn that to you to help me with.
Okay. Incidental signs may or may not have a definition included. If it does not have a definition included, that's an oversight on my part. And it does not have a definition included, so that is one that I would need to add to the draft.
That's right, got you. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Are there, in the proposed code, are there any signs that are not considered signs that are considered signs in the current code? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Could you tell us which ones are signs?
Well, and it's not so much that they're not considered signs versus not a sign. And it may be helpful, if I may, just to read the definition of sign, and that will explain things. And the definition of sign that I'm going to read is the same in the current ordinance. There's been no change to that. A sign is any display, illustration, structure, or device that has visual display where any portion of said visual display is visible from any public travelway and designed to identify, announce, direct, or inform. So anything that is not visible from the travelway is not considered a sign. And there is no change in that from the current ordinance to what is proposed. What is changing is where it is regulated as far as numbers. So the current ordinance has a small list of ones that wouldn't be included in your allowed signage. And the proposed ordinance expands that. So for instance, the current ordinance doesn't regulate the number of grave markers you can have, neither does the proposed ordinance. The current ordinance doesn't address decorations. The current ordinance says decorations are exempt. We aren't considering those signs. The current ordinance exempts original art display. The proposed ordinance also exempts original art display. The current ordinance does not mention rope lights. The proposed ordinance mentions rope lights, simply because a lot of businesses have them. So that was a reason why I toss that in as exempt, because...
What about the number M down there? Is that, if that's considered a sign, it can be, it's not exempt?
We haven't come to this one yet, because these are signs, but they are prohibited. So we've talked about what is a sign, what is not a sign. Now, we're going to be talking about signs that are prohibited. Does that make sense? So the first, the first part of what we discussed is, this is a sign, therefore it's regulated.
Right.
The second part was, this is not a sign, therefore it's regulated.
So these are not regulated?
No, these ones will be, oh, yes, yes.
These are not regulated.
Yes, these ones would be signs that are, that are considered to be signs, but they are exempt from regulation.
So my question is, is M currently exempt under the current ordinance? It's not a sign?
And you said it...
Yes. If it's not visible from the travelway, then it's exempt. In Ocean Lake, Nell Scott, and TAFT, they all have different regulations for window signage. The current ordinance for window signage is silent. It simply does not mention it.
In GC, I believe it is exempt.
All right.
Let's see. We have here, and then Counselor Coos, then Counselor Hoakland.
Okay, back up to definitions. The second one, abandoned sign, means a sign or a sign structure where the sign is no longer used by the person who erected or had cause to have erected the sign. That's the sentence there. But my question is, shouldn't, because it's an abandoned sign, what would trigger that we would know that it's abandoned? Shouldn't there be like a timeframe, like if a business closed down for a month because they had an illness in their family or something? Would that be considered abandoned and then if they were coming back? I mean, I just don't know how to, how to think like that.
The tricky part about abandoned is that, because we can't say anything about the content of it, if the sign, if it's advertising a business that's no longer in business, the person who erected that sign could put something else up on the sign that is actively in use.
Okay, let me ask it a different way. How would you know, whoever's going to enforce this, know if a sign is abandoned?
Is it complaint-driven?
I'm going to leave that as a question mark to come back to. That's a good question.
Like a blockbuster sign?
That's a good question mark, especially as, especially as it pertains to the content neutral.
The news time sign.
City used to prohibit off-premise signs. I could not advertise for Joe's Spick and Span on my property if I, if Joe's Spick and Span wasn't there. That's not the case anymore. That's the content neutrality part of it. So that, when you're looking at abandoned, that could change things, especially as you're looking at its content. Counselor Coos?
Oh, on G, it says vehicle signs that are not prohibited under 17.1723. Question mark, question mark, question mark.
Yes, that is because in the draft ordinance, because it is a working, living being, the subsections have not been numbered.
Got it, okay.
That's something that Richard does at the very end. And so I wanted to refer back to the subsection that exists for that which we don't have to number yet.
Got it, thank you.
Let's go to Counselor Hoakland, and then Counselor Gahan.
So we have decorations are not a sign, but the decorations for Halloween say shop now. How would you do that? Or Christmas decorations, let's say, let's, you know, eat at Joe's Scrap Shack.
I'm marking these down because some of these, we're going to have to come back to you on. Decorations that advertise businesses.
Wouldn't you be getting right back to the content?
And the decorations.
They're not regular.
Okay, great. Okay? Thank you.
And then the other one is, it states a lot of times, like, let's just say the feather banner stated fabric, but if I built out of cardboard the same shape, would it be exempt?
Does material matter?
It does specify flexible material.
Right. So now you have this whole thing based on what it's made out of. And if I make it out of not flexible, not bunting, or whatever, the feather banner is another kind of sign.
Okay.
But it's just a shape, it's a feather banner, material.
Yeah, and I would think, I would lean towards agreeing what he says, is it's more with the, with the flexible versus non-flexible. And if it's non-flexible, then that puts it into the category of a freestanding sign rather than a feather banner.
Counselor Casper?
Just for clarification, on the illuminated signs, they're not signs and they're not regulated because they're not visible on the roadway. Is that correct? Roadway meaning Highway 101 or your certain pearl areas?
Anything that's a travelway.
Anything. So does that open up the availability to have neon signs, like Vegas City Lincoln or something, you know, neon signs throughout the town? Does that make that permissible?
If it's not visible from the travelway, then it wouldn't be a sign. So the draft ordinance would not regulate that.
So give me an example of where this not regulated, not a sign would be?
For instance, the outlet hall. The interior of it is not visible from a roadway. So there, and that's, our current ordinance is the same way. So any signage, signage that is installed in the interior of the outlet hall, unless it requires a building permit, which is separate from a land use sign permit, planning Title 17 doesn't have any jurisdiction over the number or the size or the allowances for those signs. If they're permanent and attached to the building, then the building code requirements still come into play for safety and how they're attached and wind load.
So if illuminated sign is visible, then it's a sign? Say it's not, say it's Maxwell's or, you know, somebody like that, or Christmas cottage decides to put up a big Christmas tree, light illuminated, would that still be not regulated?
If it meets the definition of a sign, it would be regulated.
Okay. So now it's visible, it's on the roadway, now it's a sign?
Correct.
Okay.
It's very...
That's very confusing.
I just had, I just had a correction on packet page 6, the last item, non-conforming sign. It has permanent sign, permanent signs. And I know you need one or the other, so.
I think there's just a period missing after the first.
I will circle that and correct it.
She said a period, then the first permanent sign, then it makes it slightly different.
Of which, indirect signs.
There's one right under handheld sign, and then another one under illuminance.
Okay.
Which, I had a question about the luminance, measured in foot candles versus luminance, which is measured in nits or candellas per square meter. What's the difference?
The difference is that we need to flip over to illumination on packet page 18. And just to give you a little bit of background, this is, I think, the seventh iteration of the sign draft, the draft sign ordinance. The definitions may not necessarily coincide at this point with the content. The last change that I made to the sign ordinance was to the illumination standards on packet page 18. And those standards came directly from the National Signs Organization. And I have not updated the definitions to match those... And I have not updated the definitions to match those illumination standards. So the knit, okay. So the knit definition, in answer to your question, short answer, needs to go away.
In my experience, when you're measuring length, you're using foot candles as the measurement. All right. Okay, let's just quickly go over signs that are prohibited and then we're going to talk about signs that are.
I have another question.
Yes.
Page seven, sorry. Original art display. There seems to be some discussion staff wants.
Oh, if you see that, disregard that. Those, I forgot to get rid of those notes.
Okay. So.
Those are actually not part of the text. They were just, those are internal discussions that we were reminding each other of.
Okay. And I just want to say, we do have, you know, we're speaking about art and we're signage. We do have a comprehensive art plans. Art master plan.
That's another one that's an internal discussion. Yeah, my apologies. You'll find in some of these, there are some bold. And they still may be a little bit of color associated with them. Those were some internal discussions staff was having. I thought I got rid of them all, but apparently not.
Anne Marie, for my own, in the illumination section, it talks about par spot. P-A-R-S-P-O-T. This is on packet page 18. Could you explain that? Or if not, can we maybe get a definition?
That is an item. It has to do with, it's a specific type of bulb or lamp. I don't know exactly what it is, but that would be something that I would add in the definition. Thank you.
I have another question too.
Yeah, we're not quite there yet.
Okay.
Okay. All right, signs that are prohibitive included flashing or blinking signs, abandoned signs, unlawful signs, reflecting signs, obstructions of traffic, control markings, instructions of drivers to pedestrians or pedestrians to drivers, beacons, inflatable signs, except those that are attached to the property, which is an ordinance that counsel had worked on last year. Signs and components of the elements of sign that shimmer or contain reflective devices, signs which emit any odor or noise or visible matter other than light, video signs.
What page do you want for the rest of this?
13. Packet page 13.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I didn't go through all of these. Just the ones I really kind of wanted to highlight there, the ones we usually get questioned about. Zip lights, strobe lights or similar projected image signs. A vehicle or trailer used as a sign or as the base for a sign or the primary purpose of the vehicle in that location is to use as a sign. Okay? So those are the items that are considered to be signs, but are prohibited in our community. All right, we are now going to packet page 11, which is the placement of signs.
Can you just define video sign? Is it like a moving more than once per 60 seconds? Oh, sorry, eight. Sorry, I'll look it up. Go ahead. I got it.
Okay, thank you. Placement of signs, this is where the whole discussion with ODOT becomes important. Because there is, if we regulate signs on Highway 1, in order to regulate the signs on Highway 1 and make it equitable, if we were to do that, we created the term of travel way instead of right-of-way. Right-of-way has a very specific term. It's based upon lot lines. Travel way is, you got that definition?
Travel way is an area that is for use of the general public for driving, walking, maneuvering, bicycling or other means of travel. So it eliminates the lines between, essentially the property line, which right-of-way is the area between property line and property line that is street, curb, gutter, sidewalk.
I'm not going to go through every, A down through all of these, but there's some that I do want to emphasize. One of them is item number B. All portions and components, signs and sign structures must be placed that no portion or component obstructs clear and under hindered passage of any vehicle, bicycle or pedestrian traffic in any travel way. Okay, now, let me use the two comparisons. If we said right-of-way, okay? That would mean a feather banner, a flag, could not be put in the park strip because that is part of the right-of-way. If we use travel way and under this part where it's not an obstruction, you could put it in the park strip as long as it did not obstruct bicycle, pedestrian or vehicular traffic. The park strips are the best example of how that would. It's the grass area that's between the curb and the sidewalk.
Not all sidewalks have that.
Not all sidewalks have.
Banners go at the curb itself.
Or consider the fact that you may have a six-foot sidewalk instead of a four-foot sidewalk. Or consider the fact that you may have a curve that's well inside of, past the white line of the travel lane for the vehicles. Okay? All of those come into play. And so under the ordinance that we had designed, we would be looking, does it obstruct the traffic? If we adhere to ODOT's regulation, you can, it's not permitted at all in the right-of-way.
So pedestrian as well as vehicular.
And bicycle. That's where we first see this really coming into play as to who has, will have jurisdictional authority over the roads.
This does not apply to the pearls that have the on codes? Is that right?
The current sign ordinance and the proposed sign ordinance, right now, unless we receive direction otherwise, only apply to the GC, the RC, PI and the.
So it wouldn't actually.
PC, so those four zones.
Allow in Nell Scott, wherever it's that straight forward, Taft or Ocean.
It would not change Nell Scott, Taft or Ocean Lake because those are separate zones. So that's something for the group to consider if they're interested in pursuing making that change.
Okay, the next item I wanted to bring up is, again, pertains to travel way. And that's item number C. All portions of the display and all components associated with it must be placed outside of the required five-foot wide clear circulation path. No portion or component of any sign, sign structure or any other item allowed in this chapter shall obstruct, impede or be within the required five-foot wide clear circulation path in any travel way. Can you describe a circulation path?
Yes, the circulation path is the required ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act path that we have to abide by per federal regulations. And that is defined as basically what is said there, a five-foot wide clear circulation path. So in a five-foot area, any person specifically with a disability has to be able to move without going through an obstacle course. So move in a straight line. And that is the way our Public Works Engineering Department have defined that as a circulation path. So I just included that definition into the sign so that we would be on board with the ADA requirements.
How far north is Ocean Lake zone though?
Twenty-first street.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. The other one I wanted to point out is item number D, again, because it's an emphasis on obstruction versus not placing them in the travel way at all. No portion or component shall be placed or displayed in a manner that presents a safety hazard to pedestrians, bicycles, bicyclists, vehicles and drivers or anyone else in the travel way. Those three, more than anything else, show the difference between not allowing signs in the right-of-way and allowing signs within the travel way as long as they are not obstruction, obstructions.
How, what percentage of our sidewalks are five feet or more?
I don't know the percent. Most of them are four feet, but I'll see what I can find out.
So then, by requiring it to be five feet, when they're four, it kind of says, nope.
We can map that for you.
But I mean, like, we don't even have the five feet.
I thought that ADA was four feet with like, the ADA for five feet, but it could either be three feet if there are turnoffs and spaces. So that's where I was, I was going to ask about the five feet, but I hadn't heard about the circulation path and how they define that. I was pretty sure it was four feet. I know for ramps and anything like that, you have to four feet.
The Public Works Design Standards have it defined as five feet. If you want to reduce it to four feet, then you have to request an exception and that has to be approved by the city engineer.
And it still would fit the ADA requirement?
Yes.
Okay, as you can see, I didn't go through everything on that. Are there any questions as far as the placement of signs go?
I'm just asking. Placement of A, all portions and components of signs and sign structures must be placed outside of vision clearance areas. Is there a definition for vision clearance? Because my vision might be different than yours.
And that's a very good question. There's a set definition. It's in Title 17. There's also, it's also reflected in the Public Works Design Standards. It's a triangle and it's defined as, and I'm not going, I will bungle the.
The clear vision.
Yes.
Is it 20 or 30 feet back from the?
It depends on the type of intersection, whether it's control.
Either 20 or 30 feet back from the point where.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that, but I didn't see it as written as clear vision and that's always.
So I think I need to change it to clear vision?
I mean, no, I don't.
That's good. Outside of the clear vision. Okay.
I'm mostly familiar with the Trump side treatment. Okay. The next thing I wanted to discuss was the, or several other regulations beginning with temporary versus portable sign. Packet page eight. This is a definition for temporary signs. Okay, right here. Temporary sign, it's a sign which is displayed consistently, but only for a limited and defined period of time and is not permanently affixed or attached to a building, structure or the ground and is designed to be easily removed at the end of the limited and defined period of time. Temporary signs are lawn signs, sidewalk signs. Pole signs can also be designed and utilized as temporary signs. A portable sign, which is on packet page seven, right here, is a sign that is not a temporary sign. It is transported in and out of the building or structure on a daily basis and is not affixed to a building, structure or the ground in a permanent manner. Portable signs are A-frame signs, sandwich board signs, sidewalk signs or flags. And here's an item of note, because this has been one of the greatest of interest. A feather banner means a portable sign of cloth, bunting, plastic, paper or similar non-rigid flexible material taller than it is wide and attached to a pole. A feather banner is not a flag or a banner. Okay? Any questions on temporary versus portable signs? Portable signs can have a longer length of period than a day, but they have to come down at the end of the time period. Portable signs are done at the end of each day. Okay? Under portable signs, the permitted types of numbers, you are permitted two flags and one of either an A-frame, a sandwich board sign, a feather banner or a sidewalk sign. And then the placement of the portable signs. It must not be erected, placed or maintained in a manner that constitutes a hazard violates clear vision area requirements, violates ADA accessibility requirements, including the five-foot wide clear travel path or obstructs or interferes with the clear, safe, unobstructed and direct passage of pedestrians, bicycles or vehicles. Again, there we come back and get to a travel way versus a right-of-way. Under the ODOT regulations, these would not be permitted in a right-of-way. Under the ordinance we have designed, they would be permitted as long as the ordinance.
So my concern, we're now limiting to one feather banner. What's the reaction from the.
Mostly what I heard, and Anne Marie and I both have been out talking to a lot of businesses, mostly what I heard, setting aside what the number should be, regulating the number and regulating its maintenance were fine. What number it is, I don't know. You know, that vary depending on which business you talk about. But regulating the number and regulating the maintenance were fine. Regulating the placement was a problem.
Correct. Most businesses, and I visited with about 90-plus businesses, and there were a few that wanted unlimited number of feather banners and flags and banners. But I think by and large, most of them wanted at least, were fine with one.
The formula that we generally heard from was everybody should get at least one and then it could be increased based upon the front footage you have of your business.
And I simply put in these numbers more as placeholders discussion. There's certainly no set stone formula that I use just based upon my discussions with businesses and survey results. And then folks can direct however you prefer.
Does the council get the same results to the sign survey that we reviewed?
This is the first work study that the council was at on signs.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So no. But the survey results by and large indicated the public doesn't seem to care for feather banners, banners or flags and would prefer that they go away as opposed to the businesses would like one.
Which makes no sense at all. What's the point except to get people in there?
Well, but depending on who you're asking.
Residents versus tourists.
I just, you know, when we're talking about this, I was looking at the purpose and objectives for doing this. Number three, to enhance and improve the overall aesthetic of the city. And number seven, to prevent, actually on page nine, to prevent proliferation of signs and sign clutter by regulating the number of sizes, size of signs. And so I did a little, I didn't do it by each, I took one block. It was a lawn block. It was the, in Ocean Lake from a hard drive store through Sweet Batites, just on the side of the building. I mean, street. And it has seven buildings, seven businesses. And so I just went through the list of how many signs according to. And so I just went through the list of how many signs, according to this latest version, that they could have legally. And so with seven buildings and two flags, and one of them could be of any size, that'd be fourteen flags, it's just on one block, one side of the street. Seven portable signs, and there's a list of what that could be. So that would be, you know, could be feather banners or other types of signs. Seven permanent roof signs or other signs. Seven freestanding signs or seven per block per building. I wasn't quite sure about that. So that's thirty-five signs on one, on one side of the block, plus the, a permanent sign, which is seven hundred square feet per building. So would that be like five signs? I mean, we have a number of-
Seven hundred square feet per building.
It doesn't apply to Ocean Lake. They all have their own code, so this, it would actually be different. And currently, Ocean Lake is limited to forty-eight square feet per building for permanent attached signage. So I think our current code is less strict than what's written here, and we don't have every single person using every single sign. So I don't know that that is, I mean, yes, hypothetically, if it did apply.
And that's all I was doing, and I just chose it. And how many signs does that-
Currently, counselor, the, the current code, if, if you added up the number of signs that every business and building could have in the general commercial zone, not Ocean Lake, Nell Scott, or Taft, and compared that to this, actually, the current code allows more. With the current code, they're allowed, every business is allowed one flag and two feather banners. Every legal lot is allowed one portable sign. They're all allowed, the lot frontage tells them how much freestanding sign they can have, and the attached sign, they're all allowed one, up to one hundred square feet, again, based upon their, their frontage. So the proposed sign actually reduces the number of temporary and portable signs.
It still looks to me like clutter. And the other piece of it is, whatever large sign that you have on the building, nowhere did I read in definitions of what that is, that it could be perpendicular and that they could all be the same. I realize the seven, you know, I mean, I realize the pearls and the string and all of that, but I'm looking at a whole city, and I'm driving, and I don't know what things are. And there, I've been looking at this for a couple of years, driving through the towns, trying to, you know, around the size of ours, larger, smaller, whatever. And just recently, a number of us were in Bend and driving around there, and it is not cluttered. I mean, you don't have things flapping at you, all the signs are pointed in the same direction, and it just, it's easier to draw. I don't know Bend, I was a visitor, and I wanted to know what was there. And it was easy to see what people were selling, you know, was it food, or was it, you know, clothing, or was it tourist items? And it was easy to see. And all of this, I, I don't see that clarity. I just see a whole bunch of different types of signs that are trying to portray, portray the same information. Like, come in, we're open, okay. But not the same. So, and that is one of the questions.
The exercise that Council Hinton went through is a good exercise, because ultimately, when you look at your ordinance, you should be able to say, or land use rights, you should be able to say by reading it, this is what I'm going to get. Okay? It should not be, it should not be uncertain of what you're going to have. So one of the things that we as a staff can do for you as you go through this is that, and as you consider the signs, we can pick any number of blocks that you want and just begin to say, this is what would be permitted. Not what is, but what is permitted. Because the other rule of thumb that you always use with land use is that whatever is permitted, that's what you'll get. So whatever is, and I usually say it this way, whatever is permitted in that zone that you really don't want, just expect that you're going to get that. And that's how you have to design good land use ordinances. You should be able to visualize it. So if it will help in going to the planning commission and the city council, we can go through these very same exercises so that you can get an idea of what it is now and what it would be other, otherwise. And that will give you a pretty good, would not try to put any pictures associated with that, because that would not be fair to the businesses and the property owners. We would just want to simply tell you, these are the numbers you would end up being able to get.
There's going to be a discussion about whether or not the whole city should have one, or not have the four different pieces of signs.
And that is one of the main things.
Tonight, we're gonna talk about that?
We are, yeah.
Because we're looking at, it's a kind of a different thing, like, we're gonna create it for everybody else or not, or is it going to be a listing across the whole city?
We, we are at the point now, with whatever items you want to bring up for discussion, bring them up, shift them a little bit away from questions to more statements, such as, for example, if Counselor Hoagland is interested in having a consistent ordinance throughout the whole community, and this doesn't say that, then that might be a statement that you want us to bring back information on.
Right.
So we are at the point, and for the next ten minutes or so before we have to jump into the next one, of any concerns, items, things that you would like to bring up, we're taking notes so we can bring back the information to you.
I would like to let the council know, we do have a lot of background information on our project website as well. One of the things in the survey, as well as our August fifteenth work study, was that of those that participated, a strong desire to have one consistent ordinance citywide.
What was the sample size?
Of the, how many, how many? It was about, it was a hundred and forty responses, a hundred and forty-one. That ran through all of July, and then we-
On that, I'd like to provide that with you at a later time. What I really want to hear now is what are the things of interest to you that you want to see, either you know you want to see it, or you need more information on it, so that we can bring back that. As Lindsay said, we may already have it, we may not, but we need to hear from you, your feelings, so that we can bring the information back to the council.
I would like to make a statement that I would like to see consistency throughout the whole town.
I agree.
I have a question in regard to that, and that would be, if we have consistency on signs throughout the whole town, how might that impact the proposed design standards that are specific to the pearls, the strings, and other areas?
And that is the question. Do you want the consistency to, to be what it is for GCRC? Or you want the consistency to be what it is for Nell Scott, Ocean Lake, and Taft?
Can you restate what you just said?
Can you restate it for me?
I was gonna flip it, because when I started looking at this packet, I thought, well, why aren't we talking about design standards first, and then moving to signs that are part of the design standard?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Anyway, that's, that's fine.
So if I try to restate, let me try to restate that. So if, if the sign ordinance-
Is consistent.
Is consistent, how does it affect the design standards, ordinance?
Yeah, what's the relationship of one to the other? We need to look at that.
Okay.
The intent in the design standards is to create cohesion through the whole town, and I think it would make sense, having a unified sign code would be a way to create that cohesion, that the intent of the design standards is looking for.
Well, it's also to, it's also to enforce the diversity of our different pearls, and to let the public be aware of the pearls and their different design standards.
And that's a question that I had regarding the, the sign code. I thought it was nice that we had a Wacom, a Nell Scott, a Taft, a Cutler City, and for as much as we have these pearls or communities, they should each be allowed to have their own design standard. I don't know.
Well, I think part of the challenge is even folks sitting at the table here, I think we can all admit that not everyone is quite sure where Wacom begins and ends, and where Ocean Lake begins and ends, and, and all of that. So if, if we don't know off the top of our heads, or is it, is it fair to have that expectation of the community to hold themselves to four different design standards? And doesn't that make it way harder to enforce, and our issue, and where we've gotten now is because it hasn't been enforced? So there's so many non-conforming things now. So I, I think it makes sense, and, you know, even when we get to the design standards, maybe talk about that, how to simplify it a little bit, and have one, because I know Patty, who's not here, she had a comment of, what if the city had a unified look of something that they could give to business owners that makes everything more uniform? So, or, and I, I noticed, like, the light posts all the way through town. Lots of the towns people mention that they like to look up, they've just got a little blade sign coming up, and we could have all the way through Ocean Lake, through Taft, and it would, you know, they could be unified, but different for each pearl. So, you know, those are things that I think are specifics for signs that might help businesses, where they wouldn't be fighting for those feather banners if there was something, you know, really showing people this is a commercial district.
And that, about signs too, that just reminded me that, is that some of the businesses on the side streets and not on the highway, so they don't quite have the exposure. I noticed this, I think it was in Bend, running way back and forth, several of us were there, that there were, there is like a post, and there were arrows.
Some wayfinding signs.
Yeah, and they were great, because they, I can't remember, I don't think they said the business name, but they said what, that they were-
We have some in town that are outdated. There's one, I think, off of six, it's somewhere between fifteenth and seventeenth, behind, I think it's right behind Enrique's, so it's fifteenth. And there's a, there is a wayfinding sign, but I think at least over half of the businesses aren't around anymore that it points to. So yeah, that's-
So is that a, what's that word?
It's abandoned.
Wayfinding signs. That's where it is not regular.
Yeah, I like that idea. Businesses versus, you know, like, I'm just picking on-
And even pointing to beach access is also, because people have trouble finding those off the highways.
If you go to Thirty-third Street, it says, it says lodging and, what is it, and beach, right there in that concrete thing in that new building, I mean, that's right there.
Well, one of the comments that I've always made about our signage is that it's kind of like a cocktail party. Everybody talks loudly at the cocktail party, so everybody else talks louder at the cocktail party. And that's the way I think our signage is, is that, you know, we have this signage, and it's harder to see, so we have more signage, it makes it harder to see, which we have. Unless they change banding, and I meant having given it a long time, they used to just have a sign that said, well, it was that way. And the town was very pretty, because you didn't have all these banners and flags and stuff.
Interestingly enough, I'm trying to think of how this works with the banding flag, is that, so the one thing I try to make sure of is that we don't have a headline that says Lincoln City Band is the American flag. So that's, that's huge. That would be flags that might be put out by the businesses, or Kiwanis, or anybody else. But one thing that's interesting to, to note is that, as you're talking about wayfinding signs, if, if, if we use that they're not permitted in the right of way, okay, then wayfinding signs can become even more important to businesses, you're not allowed to put signs out in front of their businesses. Okay, I guess, on that, for, for me, and having not been privy to planning, as I remember some of the earlier conversations around feather banners, the businesses were putting feather banners out to let travelers or potential customers know they're open. It was, I don't know how it ranked, but that was the argument I heard first and foremost. I guess I could counter that with, well, if you had consistent days and hours, that would be perhaps helpful. And so, you know, then came sign, or words on feather banners, which said, I'm open. And so that also kind of defeated the colorful, for me, anyway, the colorful banner, just to add color against a gray background and all of that. I'm concerned with the litter, and I think that was Counselor Hinton's point of some of their reason, clutter, yeah, cluttered, that, you know, we just keep adding stuff. And, and so, you know, one sign is good, maybe four or five, and then my neighbor wants to outdo me, you know, and I look for Nell Scott script, it's to be a classic A-frame that's come out. And we know you're open, because there's, so I, I guess I don't know where all this stuff goes, and, and I'm hoping that planning has had that kind of conversation with yourselves and the businesses. So I haven't had a business yet that doesn't think more signs would be better. But I, I then throw out Burger King, for the heck of it, I watched it from November of last year, so it must have been May of this year without a sign. And it seemed to do okay. And it's a national franchise, so I'm not sure you need a sign, is, is what I'm led to. So I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards, you know, smaller and fewer.
I think signs are really important for businesses. I mean, yeah, consistent hours is one thing, but when you put a sign out, or a flag out when you open every day, and whether you're consistent or not, if that flag's not out, people think that you're not open. So if there is a change in the code where it doesn't allow that, those businesses who have been putting them out for a period of time, they will, they're, it's not gonna be known to tourists coming into town that we've changed our sign ordinance. It's gonna look like there's no, and I don't know if you guys remember the day ODOT came to town and told all the businesses to take down their flags, but Ocean Lake looked sad. It looked abandoned, and like, nothing was open. So, you know, I, I, I don't think it looks nice. I mean, I, I think having it standardized and all that, I mean, we're gonna have to drill new holes to put out as many banners as, as would potentially be allowed, so is the city gonna allow that? Maybe the city just says, we're not drilling any new holes, use what's there, and this is how many each people get, first come, first served. But, you know, if you're wanting to limit it on a block, and it's not for business, how are you gonna pick and choose which businesses get these and which ones don't? And I don't, I don't see a fair way to make that decision.
You know, I just, I want to comment about the open or closed, and some, like I said, I've been traveling around looking at, at signs in different communities, and there are signs that are perpendicular to the street, so you're driving by and you can see what they are, and you can slide in like an open sign or a close at the bottom. At the end of the day, you can change out that. I mean, there's real simple ways, I think, that still, still would convey the message of they're open or closed, rather than a feather banner or some other kind of noisy way of pulling people in. In fact, we just have one simple way of doing all of that. And some of the photographs, graphs of examples in later discussion today, I was looking at there about design, but, you know, whichever, if you was doing that, the exam, photo examples in our packets, I was looking at the signs on those buildings, you know, they're real easy to, to look at and provide the information, so, anyway.
Now, so much of the signage is redundant, because if I drive by a store and the lights are on, and there's a neon sign in the window that says open, they don't need their two feather banners out in front of saying they're open. I know that by being at the store already. It's just redundant.
Well, if you're coming from out of town and you don't know where the business is, it certainly helps find it easier than trying to look for something in a window. I mean, I say, people, I have a great website, I got my address out there, I get twenty-one thousand hits on Google a month, and I have people regularly that cannot find where my business is, because the signage options for permanent signage are, are bad. I mean, I have a sign link- I mean, I have a sign link flat on the awning, which you can only see coming down Fourteenth, and if, if there's not that out there, people can't find it. And, and I'm just saying, that's my personal experience, if, you can Google the address.
There's a perpendicular sign, you can see one right after.
And how, but how do we get these installed for businesses? Because, I'll tell you what, some businesses are fine, they'll be just fine without it. There are other businesses that will not make it three months without a sign, especially going into the winter and through the winter. They have to choose, my sandwich board, or this, or if their neighbor gets it and they don't, um, you know, it can take time for those things to happen, and time will put someone out of business.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and make a topic change here, just looking at the clauses and stuff. So I'd suggest, you know, keep writing, what kind of questions and things that come up, because this is the value of the work session, is get some of these things around.
Well, not that I wish to contradict the mayor for instance.
Don't.
I'm, I'm all small. It seems to me that every time we get around and discussing either design ordinance, or design standards, or whatever next, we have lots of questions, so it doesn't seem to me like we have come to a meeting of the minds amongst ourselves, or as a group, to what we should do, so maybe we need to fresh this out.
And I, I don't disagree, and that's why we have work sessions, but we don't make decisions at work sessions. So we can have another work session just for signs.
Yeah, I want to go home at five o'clock, but I'm.
Going until six.
Well, at your break. It may be better for you.
I don't agree. So what's disagreeing with me?
It's a democracy.
One, we get to the other subject? Okay.
Next subject.
We are, let's see. So we're beginning on page, packet page forty-two. We're talking about design regulations, a little bit of history, again, this began a year or so ago. The planning commission has had some discussions on this, the city council has not, and it's, but it's, and so it's, it's making its way through the process. First of all, applicability, this ordinance that you have before you applies to the multifamily residential zones, the general commercial zone, and the recreational commercial zones. It does not apply to Nell Scott Plan District, districts, Taft Village Corps, or the Ocean Lake Plan District. They have their own design standards.
How about PC?
And this only applies to the multifamily residential, general commercial, and residential commercial.
PC, it doesn't apply to PC though.
Okay, important note, and this is one to keep in mind as you are thinking about and reviewing this ordinance. It's a long ordinance, there's lots of information, most of it is in your current ordinance, okay? A lot of it is not, is changing, and Anne Marie will go over some of those. But this area consists of both developed and undeveloped property. That's significant. Undeveloped property will develop according to the design standards. Developed properties that don't meet these standards will be non-conforming structures, and they will be required to become conforming structures if they reach certain triggers, okay? And that's where I want to go through first, is what are the triggers that would require a developed piece of property to have to meet these standards? And again, some of these are not new to us, most of them are not new to us, they are not found in this section seventeen point seven four, they're found in seventeen point six four. I don't have that up, so you'll, you'll just have to listen and go forward. Okay, the first trigger that would require a non-conforming structure to come into conformance with these standards is for substantially damaged property. When damaged property is fifty percent or more, the structure can be restored to the height and footprint only. The remaining rebuild must be according to the standards of the design standard ordinance seventeen point seven four, okay? Now, these are important to note, because as you go through this, there's always intended consequences, but there's always unintended consequences. And let me give you an example of that. Also, go back to Adam Smith and think of, and think of basic economic principles, which is, people do what is in their best interest, okay? For years, we have required that in the Ocean Lake area, that when, when this trigger is hit, then they have to bring in more parking. And the city council will remember, a few months ago, we brought this up, and it was, it was brought up because people were not, were not fixing up their buildings, because they could not meet the parking requirements. So in Ocean Lake, we eliminated the parking requirements, okay, because of that trigger being two owners, okay? I don't know if it is two owners or not, but we have had an example of, of that that we recently dealt with, okay? Enlargements or alterations requires conformity to the design regulations. Moving a non-conforming structure, moving within the lot is okay if it decreases the non-conforming. If, if it is moved to a new lot, then the building must be brought up to current design requirements or regulations. If the building has been abandoned for twenty-four months, then the building must be brought into compliance with the current regulations. Additional improvements for commercial sites when the trigger is hit. Okay, if there, so if, let me see if I can get this right. If there is an enlargement, okay, an structural enlargement, then twenty-five percent of the cost of the conversion has to also go to bringing the existing facility into compliance. And it's specific for pedestrian circulation, materials and color, pedestrian spaces, screening and parking lot landscaping, water quality, exterior lighting, transparency, which means windows, and landscaping of existing setbacks. Now, what that means is that if I have a hundred thousand dollar enlargement of my building, then twenty-five thousand, an additional twenty-five thousand dollars has to go to bringing the existing facility up to compliance, okay?
To me, it would be, the maximum would be twenty-five thousand.
Right, right. You don't have to do more than that. Thank you.
And it could be less.
No.
It, it reads the, within the cost not to exceed twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent.
Why would we ever want to do less?
Why would we?
It's basically is, it would be.
The enforcement of it is going to be twenty-five percent. I can't imagine why you would ever do less.
It's so that, so that, it's the safeguard, so that the city can't make them do more than twenty-five percent.
If it's not.
It's just not.
If it's not that far out of non-conformance, then.
Exactly. It might only be five percent, because it might not be twenty-five percent.
So it would be to bring it into conformance or up to twenty-five percent.
Right.
Point of order, twenty-five percent and twenty-five thousand dollars, about the same thing. Well, it's twenty-five percent on a five thousand dollar.
Example being. If that values was a hundred thousand dollar enlargement.
Okay.
An additional twenty-five thousand dollars would then have to be used. So prob, so it would be.
Same numbers.
Up to.
I'm disagreeing with you.
Twenty-five thousand dollars, whichever is greater, or whichever is less.
And this, and this whole chapter seventeen point six four is not proposed to be changed. None of it is being changed.
That's correct. Okay, now, there is an exception in this to that twenty-five percent, as you'll see throughout much of this, it does not apply to single-family dwellings, attached single-family dwellings, duplexes, and manufactured dwellings. Okay, now, one of the most, so I am now going to packet page forty-eight. One of the most significant things in, in this, in this ordinance is in its intent, and I am looking at number E, which I have up on the board. Design standards versus design guidelines, okay? And I want to give you a couple of examples. This building would not meet our design guidelines, under several reasons. The eventuary would not meet our design guidelines, okay? There are several buildings that, both in good shape and not in good shape, that would not meet this. So, most standards contain approval criteria that are objective. However, some criteria require the reviewer to apply discretion. Where discretion is involved, the reviewing body must use the guidelines in evaluating the proposal. Now, the reason I bring that up is that the significant change to our existing ordinance is the reviewing body. This is permitted already in our existing ordinance, so let's say it requires sixty percent windows. If you tried to do that, it would just be a disaster-looking type of thing. You've got a beautiful historic building, and you completely change the nature of it and ruin a classic, okay? It meets the guidelines. Under the current ordinance, that discretion to allow to not apply portions or all of this code rests with the community and development director. Under this ordinance, this change, it would be a reviewing body, okay? That reviewing body could be the planning commission, it could be the city council, it could be, it could be a group that is created by the city council, okay?
So the ordinance would not define what the reviewing body would do.
No, it did not. It did not define that. It just refers to.
Takes.
Yeah. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So that's a very significant change, and actually, I think it's one of the best changes in it, because quite frankly, it should not put all the responsibility onto one staff member, okay? All right. The next items, this is packet page fifty-one, if you're following along, these are the, since we started talking about the guiding principles, these are the guiding principles for the string along Highway one oh one. It's allow flexibility to accommodate a wide variety of site conditions while maintaining basic standards and common themes. Improve transportation operations, safety for all modes of travel, and relationships to abiding land uses. Protect and enhance streetscape aesthetics and minimize vehicular impact on surrounding land uses. Use streetscape features and different site design standards to distinguish this string from the pearls. Now, that may or may not have any kind of pertinence to your discussion on signs, but please note that in your design standards, it is trying to make a distinction between the string and the pearls, okay? Guiding principles for high-use streets, this is also on packet page fifty-one. It's to add street front by providing visual interest through site design and building articulation. Protect and enhance streetscape aesthetics, giving the street front a pedestrian scale with spaces for civic and community engagement, and improve transportation operation and safety for all modes of travel in relation to the abiding land uses. Okay, and then on packet, let's see. Okay, yep, that's all I needed to do. So as you are looking, as we are now going through this, and you're trying to picture what is our city going to look like, those are the, that's what we hope, under this ordinance it would look like, based on these guiding principles. So a good question to ask yourself, if it doesn't do it, okay?
I have a question. Way back on page forty-five, under exceptions, and one of them's repainting a, and if they're repainting, shouldn't they comply? I mean, touch-up painting is something, but it says that if you're repainting, you can repaint to the same.
So change that from a question to a statement. Should painting require approval? Or, I'm sorry, change it from a question to, that's the question, the statement is, I think that painting should or should not require approval.
Okay. If, I'm just trying to figure that, if you mean by repainting, that's the definition, I guess, question. If you mean a hundred percent repainting, then I think it should require compliance.
And the way it is right now is if you're repainting with existing colors, it doesn't.
If it's the same color, so you're saying if you're getting paint, you're painting, so you want. It makes sense to me. My only concern would be if there would be anyone that would avoid having updated paint. I mean, I don't, I think there's people not really keeping up on their current color anyway. I agree, if you're already painting.
Yeah, but then that's another issue, like it's applied and all the unsure, other ways to.
All right.
I have a gentleman.
Counselor.
You mentioned, we speak of the pearls in, in this document, we also mentioned the strings. What, what's the definition of the string?
String is the area that separates the pearls.
I guess that goes back to where the pearls, where's the string?
Allison, do you want to, well, actually, there's a map in here, isn't there?
There's a map, and granted, it's very hard to read in the packet, but it, it defines, it shows what's a pearl, what's a string, and what's a high-use street.
Page forty-four.
But I, I think the question, Judy, if I can, for me, because I have a similar one, is if we're a growing community, aren't the strings getting purred?
That's what I was.
Are the pearls getting stringed? No, no, maybe, I want a pearl.
That's what I was, that is, do we need the string in between, or can the pearl, because there's places where they already touch. Ocean Lake touches D-Lake, but technically on the map, there's a gap between Nell Scott and Taft, whereas I, I don't think of it that way. Driving through town, I think there's a pretty clear boundary of when Nell Scott turns into Taft. So I don't know, that's something I was thinking about, is.
So I'm going to give my own personal opinion on this. Okay? Don't do this right.
Can I disagree with the city manager? Okay.
Okay. You go into any city that has a long street, they're usually called State Street or Main Street, and it's State Street, USA. It's Main Street, USA. You could put it in any state, in any city, and you'd never even, even know the church at a different place. This city has been built on the idea for the last many years that the pearls are meant to be distinct from each other and from the areas in between. So this ordinance has been designed so that it's dealing with the areas that are not the pearls, because they are meant to be distinct. I often, I've often heard over the last five years, where's downtown? Or let's go downtown. And most people say Ocean Lake, when they're referring to downtown, and I'm very quick to stop them and say, that's not true. There is no downtown in Lincoln City. There are five distinct business areas that are all good and all viable. If you have the same standards that go from the full seven miles of the city, you'll have State Street, USA, that can be anywhere, anywhere in the city, in the country. Oh, here, and then here, and then, Steve, did you have a comment? And then here.
Okay. I feel left out. If Ocean Lake stops at twenty-first, and Wacoma is only on the west side of the highway, there's a whole section of Lincoln City in which I live, and which has some commercial standards, plus this whole North Lincoln, one that we're defining as part of this discussion, that don't fall in any of these categories.
That would be this area that you're talking about, right here. There's the Wacoma district, there's the Ocean Lake district.
Yep, but on the east, on the east side of Highway one oh one.
Yeah, that's part of the Wacoma district here. So the area you're talking about is right there. That's where this applies. When you get down to Ocean Lake, D-Lake's down, let's see, here's another one, so this is the end of D-Lake, there's the beginning to Nell Scott, that's where this applies. Here's Nell Scott, here's Taft, that's where this applies, this ordinance. Here's Taft, here's Cutler City, this is where it applies, okay? The, the, the design codes that are already in Wacoma, in the pearls, are meant to give it a distinctive look. For example, you may not want Ocean Lake to look like Wacoma, and you may not want Wacoma to look like Cutler City, and you may not want Cutler City to look like Taft. If you were. If you were to apply this ordinance all the way down, eventually, every property would look the same. It would become State Street, USA.
That's not what I'm asking. What I'm after is there's a whole north end of this city that I don't think falls in any of your categories.
Right here. Above Wacoa?
No, she's talking about...
Religious.
Religious is one of them, and I'm not, how far, this Wacoa beach down the east side of the highway, how far, does it go over to West Jones Lake Road?
So, go from right here, at the end of Wacoa, to this point right here, I'm not sure which street that is, that looks like it's Neotzu, isn't it? In the... Yeah. That would be controlled by this ordinance. So, everywhere where the dots are is what is controlled by this ordinance.
Okay. Then we go back to the North Lincoln thing, which is not on that map.
No, that's, that's up for the next, that's up for the last third of this meeting. Okay?
So, you said, "Ask yourself what you want it to look like." And it's not what it is right now. So, I would like it to see, I would like it to be absolutely uniform. I disagree with your any, any place town. Sisters does a great example of having a uniformed building design standard, and it doesn't look like anything. Any town, USA. I think the importance of moving forward is a unified look. If you look at all of these smaller towns, they have really revitalized themselves as a, as a community of itself, and there's strength in that. It looks like that. People absolutely say downtown, and they're talking about 15th to 22nd. There, there is that. There isn't strings anymore. And, and if we're trying to sell Lincoln City, we don't sell, we're selling the seven pearls and the string. We're saying Lincoln City. I understand it has been developed this way, but I am not a person that says, "Well, it's always been this way, so let's keep on going down that road." That's not how I feel, that's not how the people that I talk about. So, I don't agree with that. I don't feel that is a positive way to move forward. And it is absolutely crucial that we get on board of this kind of, "Let's make it all uni," let's make it a standard for the whole city, from the, from Rhodes End all the way down to Cutler City, and have it be this beach town, you know, beachside Lincoln City. Beachside Lincoln City, there it is. The whole city is beachside Lincoln City. And then they know, they're here at the beach. Our design standards reflect that. And I, and I think that keeping going with this string and pearl thing is a bad idea.
My comment is, no, it's not.
I don't care.
I understand that you don't care.
Let me, since you had the opportunity earlier, could we jump to someone who hasn't had you?
Sure.
So, I, I have, I think, a middle ground idea, because I agree entirely. I think as far as what buildings are built to look like, the shape of the roof, the pitch, all of this different stuff should be the same all the way through town. If we wanted to keep the historic aspect, which I think there is an interest, it could be split, but there is an interest in keeping the historic aspect. I, I like the idea of using pops of color to differentiate the pearls. Color kind of makes sense, it's something that's cheap, it's something people can implement, business owners can do it. It will make communities feel cohesive, and maybe let each business district kind of choose their own color and have it approved. But say, I mean, imagine if you, you come into Wacoa, and you're just kind of seeing this one color. It would make it feel kind of like a unified little neighborhood. And I think that's what people want, but we don't really, this, this code doesn't have specifics on how things will actually look unified. You know, there's the idea of having certain signs, or, or this, or that, but there's no specifics. And the color in here is very vague. It says, what is it? The, what do you want, natural colors are encouraged, subtle earth tones, but that, that bright colors could be allowed. The pearls could allow for bright colors. And to me, that doesn't really say anything. It has no specifics in colors, it's not going to lead to any form of unity. So, I don't know, I, I think the idea of getting rid of the pearls is going to be pretty unpopular, but I, I also think designing buildings around where they're sitting at doesn't make a lot of sense as far as unified.
Let me add one thing that may help in the discussion. Probably, most people don't know this, because they don't read the code for fun. But the Ocean Lake, Taft, and Nell Scott code, by and large, are exactly the same. So...
They were duplicated.
There's hardly any difference between them. And this code is almost exactly the same as all of them. So, for instance, the 60% transparency requirement, it's the same in every, every zone, except Taft, which only requires 50%. The number of primary entrances is the same. The number of, the square footage of the wall plane is the same. So, the way color is defined, the same vagueness is the same. So, the, the idea that each one was created with design standards separate and distinct is, it's not there. They're, I mean, they're all the same. The uses are different, the uses, that, I would say, if you're looking at differences, you have differences in uses that are allowed. But as far as the look, by and large, it's the same.
I would also like to expand on what Ann Marie just pointed out, is that these districts that already have design standards established, where there, where either 1774 may be more strict than what Ocean Lake requires, you'd have to comply with the design standards of 1774. So, where Ocean Lake may not have the parking requirements or the landscaping and vegetation strips of parking lots right now, because 1774 does, site design would have to also, Ocean Lake's structure would comply with the structure design in that zone, but the site design, if this is stricter, applies as well. So...
So, I have a thought. If you guys think that they really should be different, and they aren't, then you should ask the staff to look at making them really different. If you think they should be the same, then we should have one ordinance that defines the whole thing. Personally, I think they should be different.
I would like to see the pearls different by color. You know, it doesn't have to be one color. It's like you use earth tones here, and then the next one uses a different color to just identify them that way, but I do like the consistency on signs.
Are we ready to go?
Yes. And I may be, what's in my mind or vision is the difficulties we've run into as a community when we've annexed areas. And we've talked about it with the county, if the urban growth boundary is managed by county regulations, which are not the same as the city. And so, when that, that community or whatever comes into the city, then we deal with it, and Rhodes End is a good example of it. You know, setbacks, parking, all this kind of stuff. And I guess that's my fear, is that as the string shrinks, and, and that's what I meant by the pearls growing, that I, I don't want to be, have those become a second-class citizen then, because I'm, I'm envisioning the pearls are, you know, snazzy places. And, and I don't want the strings to...
Be unsnazzed.
Unsnazzed, yes. Those are probably Spanish terms.
So, the, the next part that we have to discuss, I think, will help a little bit, because there's a lot of visual. I am going to actually go back to PowerPoint and use these, because they will help show what we're talking about as far as design standards. Before we get into them, I want to point out some differences. First, with multifamily residential zone. We'll come back to the commercial and the two commercial zones in a minute, but I want to go with the multifamily residential zone. Changes of note, under the current ordinance, the one we're operating under, single-family dwellings are permitted in a multifamily dwelling zone. Under the proposed ordinance, they are not permitted. Attached, like, single-family dwellings, a townhome is permitted, but not a detached, single-family home. Under the old ordinance, rooming and boarding houses are permitted in the multifamily zone. Under the proposed ordinance, they are not permitted. Under the old or existing ordinance, bed and breakfasts are permitted in the multifamily zone. They are necessary use in the proposed ordinance. In the existing ordinance, or the old ordinance, it specifically calls out four flat dwellings. That has been changed in the proposed ordinance to be multifamily dwellings and apartments. And it has, and the definition include, would include four flat dwellings. So, it's not specifically called out separately in the definition of our multifamily dwelling. Under the existing or old ordinance, an accessory use dwelling units is in association with single-family dwellings. That still exists, but it's now accessory to an attached, single-family dwelling. Again, because under the proposed ordinance, a detached, single-family dwelling is no longer permitted. Under the existing or old ordinance, under a conditional use, timeshare units are permitted. Under the proposed ordinance, under conditional use, timeshare units are not permitted. Under the existing or old ordinance, within the multifamily zone, golf courses are permitted as a conditional use. Under the proposed ordinance, golf courses are not permitted. Under the old ordinance, the existing ordinance, mobile home parks are permitted as a conditional use in the multifamily zone. Under the new ordinance, under the proposed ordinance, multi, or mobile, I'm sorry, not multi-home, mobile home parks are permitted. Under the proposed ordinance, mobile home parks are not permitted.
Would that advocate tiny homes on wheels?
Are tiny homes defined as a mobile home?
Tiny homes, no.
They're not defined as a mobile home.
They have their own definition, and they're allowed as an allowed use in the multiple family zone.
So, we did that.
That's a single-family.
I was just going to say, I thought there was a difference, so whether they're on wheels or not.
Is there a single family?
Right, no doubt. Because if it's on wheels...
Because it's, it's on the side.
Because it's on its own wheels.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it's not considered to be a detached, single-family home.
I'll pull up the definition.
When you talk about B&amp;B, are accessory use?
Under the existing ordinance...
You've seen proposed as they...
It is not permitted.
It's not.
I'm sorry. It is a permitted use under the existing ordinance. It becomes an accessory use, which means incidental and supportive to the main use of the home.
So, that means it can be rented out with a B&amp;B?
B&amp;Bs are rented, yeah.
So, it's like a vacation?
No. In fact, they have their own separate definition.
But the distinction is, is that it is permitted under our existing ordinance. Under the proposed ordinance, it is permitted as an accessory use, which means it's incidental and supportive to the main use of the structure.
And the, the reason I made that change, counselor, was because the way that we adopt and process bed and breakfast is that you have to have, they are accessory to the primary use of a residential structure under our processing standards. You have to have the owner of the home reside full-time there during it.
All right, while she's looking for that, I'll go to the other ones, and we'll come back to it. Under the existing or old ordinance, utility substations are permitted as a conditional use. Under the proposed ordinance, utility substations are not permitted.
Yes. The definition is, tiny house means a standalone dwelling with a floor area of 400 square feet or less, excluding lofts. For purposes of this section, tiny house does not mean a trailer or recreational vehicle, meaning it has to be, wheels have to be removed, too.
Because it is not detached, multifamily residential.
We don't define it as such, because it has to be 400 square feet or less.
No, try the flag.
And a detached doesn't have that slight implication.
Yeah, that's what I was, I just didn't want you to confuse a tiny home development and a mobile home park.
Yeah. Under the existing or old ordinance, residential home is not permitted. Under the current proposed, or under the proposed ordinance, residential home is permitted as a conditional use. Under the old, or under the existing ordinance, I keep saying old, that's, make you feel like it's been not adopted anymore. Under the existing ordinance, hospitals, sanitariums, rest homes, and nursing homes are permitted as a conditional use. Under the proposed ordinance, assisted living facilities are permitted as a conditional use. Now, the significant difference in that is that in the multifamily residential zone, and all of these are pertaining only to the multifamily residential zone, a hospital and a sanitarium would not be permitted. Sanitarium's a very old term, it's pretty much out of date, so... But what it really means is that a hospital is not permitted in a multifamily dwelling.
Run, can we take that to about a residential? That is too repetitive for me to define it. No, read it again to the...
First of all, let's define it, we define residential home.
Residential home is a residential treatment, or training, or an adult foster home licensed by or under the authority of the department, as defined in O R S, blah, blah, blah.
And it is permitted in the existing ordinance as a conditional use? No, I'm sorry, it is not permitted in our existing ordinance. It is permitted as a conditional use in the proposed ordinance. In the, in the existing ordinance, transitional housing is not permitted in the multifamily dwelling or zone. In the proposed ordinance, transitional housing is permitted as a conditional use. Now, do you have any more?
No. That's it for uses.
Okay, so the next things we really wanted to go through are, I'm going to leave these up here, and I'm going to turn the bulk of this meeting, rest is time, to Ann Marie to talk about the different provisions and how they apply. We're now getting into the commercial areas. So, the first one that she's going to discuss is on packet page 55, and it is about the circulation of parking designs for the G C and R C zones.
Okay, so this beautiful diagram, this is new. The, the current ordinance doesn't have, doesn't have it labeled to this extent. By and large, the requirements that are shown on here are, are there in the current ordinance, but the diagram shows them more clearly, so developers can see more clearly that we do require a four-foot-wide perimeter landscape strip, which you can see around the perimeter. We do require a landscape island when you have 12 parking spaces in a row. Your 13th needs to be a landscape island. We are, are asking for shared access drive aisle with sidewalks. As you can see, the diagram shows this property on the right, and that property on the left, two different properties. And we're showing, the diagram shows the shared access drive aisle with the sidewalks, which is reflected in, which is reflected in the standards on packet page 54.
The newest impact on this site design is I've added in the language pedestrian connection requirements through the parking lot.
The interparcels circulation.
The gray stripes.
Pedestrian, yeah.
Right here.
Can I just mention something? That those people that are at home can't see that directional light.
I'm going to be Hannah.
They can see the cursor, but they can't see the light.
So, that's what you're trying to do, is the pedestrian connection.
Yes, that's the pedestrian connection that has been added. And that's, that's the main change of... the main change of, of what was added. The rest of the requirements are in the current ordinance, and there hasn't really been any change to those.
With, for site design, with the exception of buildings, there is a modulation, significant changes, you can see with those buildings, we don't allow square rectangular boxes.
We're coming to those.
Yeah, and that's in a different section. The other thing, and I don't think, I don't have the diagram for landscaping, but, uh, one thing, and it's not reflected on this diagram, but it is reflected in the standards in the proposed ordinance, is that we have added specific requirements for the landscape island. So in the current ordinance, these landscape islands here, correct, right there, don't have any specifications for the number of trees, or the number of shrubs, or that needs to have living ground cover, or that needs to have a curb around it. And that is the main change to landscaping in this proposed ordinance, is that we have added specifications for those landscape islands, so that the developer can come in and have clear guidance, and not just put in some, a bit over, and kind of, because of the landscape island. So, other than that, it just gives a very clear picture of how we want parking either behind, or beside your building, so there's beside, or here it's behind, and our building is at the street, so that we have that pedestrian connection and that small-town feel. And my alarm.
Sorry.
I have a question on the landscaping. Since we're moving landscaping all to the back, are we thinking about safety? Um, you know, we talked about nothing, no shrubs higher than three feet, and we talked about people, so they can't hide behind bushes, and they're hitting your car. I mean, is that all discussed? Because that's a real issue.
It is, the, the, as far as clear vision, safety, that's all referenced. So you can't have anything taller than, or between two and a half and eight feet, um, in the clear vision area. And there is also a section, not a section, a sub subsection of that, safety and pedestrians needing, needing to be, the building needs to be visible to and from the street and the pedestrian connection, and same with the parking spaces, so that people don't get lost in shrubbery or the trees, or someone can hide and jump out, and.
One, one thing we could consider is lighting. We didn't put a whole lot of sight lighting or sight features for lighting for that safety purpose, and that is something that could be considered, too, if you're wanting to save.
Okay, please do, okay. Safety.
I'm not sure if Anne Marie's listening.
Safety is such an issue.
Okay. Do, is this, you know, I know in the past, we have made certain requirements for landscaping, and then we end up giving variances to allow the builder to build, because they say they can't build it cost-effectively. So are we creating an ordinance that will end up, will end up giving variances for, because they, now we're requiring more landscaping, that will they then, oh, well, in lieu of that, we'll do this, and it'll be different? And then, and secondly, where do you see this being done? This is a lot of land here.
Let me answer this, and let me answer it first with the definition issue. Uh, variance is a legal term, okay? And there, and you have to go through a legal process to get it, and they're very hard to get. Any exceptions that are, the, exceptions to this that are permitted to be done by the review board would not be a variance, but they would be exceptions.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
On that.
I'm.
But yes, the review board could make exceptions to this, okay? Now, where this would go, um, anywhere where this zone applies. It could be, it could be a bare piece of land, it could be a redeveloped piece of land. This is just meant as a diagram, where you're gonna get requirements for the amount of parking, and everything else will just depend on site-specific layouts. But it, this, this would be the general layout you're going to have anywhere in this property, in these zones, where it's either bare ground or a redeveloped piece of property that hits one of those triggers.
And, counselor, I can give you a corollary example. The Car Wash and the Ram Song type kitchen doggy breeding place across the street, Nathan Knott owns that, he came in for a pre-application conference a month or so ago, and he's been working with me to get his plan prepared to submit. So, his is a, is a prime example of a developed site actually partially developed, because the back portion is not. So what he will be constructing on the back portion will have to, the new construction will follow all of these standards. And then 25% of his project value, he will be using to bring the rest of the site up to meet this, so that's going to be essentially for him, his parking. He'll redo the parking, install the landscape islands, he'll freshen up the landscaping along the frontage. It sounds like he's gonna repaint the existing buildings and bring signage into conformance, those are some of the things.
And then do we have bicycle parking requirements, or solar, I'm sorry, electric car requirements?
Bicycle parking requirements are in code now, and, and I have, and there is a, a reference included in here, that you have to meet the bicycle parking requirements. We don't have anything for electrical, so I will need to note that.
Actually, you know, civic power is giving grants away for commercial retailers to put in. So I, I don't know that, do we make it a requirement, or?
I don't know, but I'm just saying, where is that?
Maybe an incentive?
It could be an incentive.
You know what? If I can, uh, you know, it's a lot of green that shows there, and, uh, we've talked about water that doesn't go into the treatment plant, and we double-charge our landscapers, or commercial, to put landscaping in, and then, so we require the landscaping, we force them to water it, it has to not die, and then we charge them for the water and for the sewer they're not using.
It's a pretty good racket.
If we have, if we have a developer come in with this, and it's required the landscaping, that we look at putting in a second meter for them, for irrigation only?
Well, those are some of the things that we have, that we're under discussion as options, but I.
You might as well put it in here.
So all I'm doing is pointing out, maybe, before I go, maybe the landscaping, because I know we, we talk about natural, we have suggested landscaping, kind of stuff, maybe in.
Well, we could, we could have encouraged landscaping that is drought resistant. I have areas in my yard I never water all year, and they stay green all year. They just need to put in the light.
Native plants in the earth, but it's, it's all summer long, very little water.
And that's.
That's what makes them native.
And that's, and that's in the, that's in here, actually, that they have to use those.
Again, I'm just pointing out some of the racket that we have going.
Native plants.
Okay, so the next one we have is not moving forward. There we are. This is the building, this is building orientation diagram for pearls.
And this is, actually, this is a really good diagram that I very much enjoy, because the current ordinance doesn't have it, and when you're just reading the verbiage, it's very difficult to imagine what is being required. There is no change really in, in the requirement. The change is just that we've added this beautiful diagram. And so it shows the primary entrance, I'm pointing here at the primary entrance, for those who are at home, and there's a, it says, "Primary Building Entrance Within 10 Feet of Rideaway," so there's the primary entrance for that building, and there's the 10 feet of rideaway, so the diagram shows how this particular drawing is meeting that requirement in the pearl, and then.
Is that it?
And then within 40 feet of the, and I should say corner, not right away, within 40 feet of the corner is, is another entrance, a secondary entrance, and it is set back, so that also gives an example of building modulation, kind of pulling two birds with one stone. And it shows that at least 50% of the lot frontage is occupied by the building or the structure. And then we have vehicular access behind, which also the, this diagram doesn't show. Oh, sure. Okay. And then we have vehicular access behind, which the unshown portion would be the parking is, again, behind the building. So, and that is, that's really the only change. This requirement is in the ordinance right now, to have the primary entrance on a corner within 10 feet of the right away.
Why do we want to have a minimum size? I've mentioned, there's several places in here, it's, it's mentioned, I don't know why, that we want to have a minimum size of a building, maximum I can see, but minimum?
Minimum size?
40% coverage, that's why you want to do 25% coverage, I can't build my building then.
Okay, I'm sorry. Do you mean the entrance being provided within 40 feet of a corner?
No, you said a percentage of coverage.
At least 50% of the lot frontage occupied by building or structure.
Yeah, almost 50% of the.
That's, I don't know the answer to that. It's, that 50% requirement is in, it's in the Ocean Lake Nelscott T A F design standards, or it's in the current design standards?
Ultimately, the, the reasoning behind that, through design standards, is to create a pedestrian active space. Uh, so if your buildings are set back, you tend to be more auto-oriented in that neighborhood. These are specific to the pearls. So if you go through the standards of the strings, or our high-use streets, I believe you can have a front yard that is 50 feet long before your building is, is back there. So for the pearls, it's a desire to have that pedestrian activity, uh, in the neighborhoods, similar to, I think Ocean Lake was developed like this in the 40s and, and earlier. And, and in T A F, you see it as well, with the exclusion of some parking lots that break down.
So we'll have to do a little bit of research on that, because I'm not sure I know, we know the answer.
Now that I see that, maybe it's because it says lot frontage, or is I'm hearing lot coverage?
No, and it's, it's not lot coverage, it's.
It's frontage. It's the structure needs to be.
Frontage, that makes more sense.
Okay.
If your lot, if your lot frontage is 100 feet, then your building needs to be at least
50 feet long along that 100-foot of street.
A good example is, it's my understanding that historically, when the Goodwill came in for their site plan, uh, they were required to add that secondary building where Verizon Wireless is, to meet that frontage requirement. So, so Goodwill, the site just is, is an example of how that frontage is met through the side of the Goodwill building, and then the Verizon building there at the other corner.
So, interesting note, this goes right back to my whole comment at the beginning about Adam Smith and people doing what is in their best interest. Go to Charleston, South Carolina, go into their historic district, you'll find every building is, uh, is kinda like Motel 6 we have here, where it's the side of the building on the front, and that goes deep, all the houses and everything, and the reason is because they used to tax by how long your front footage was on it. So they turned the houses sideways and built them back, and, uh, so, unintended consequences.
Interesting.
Any more questions on this one, before we go to the next one? Okay, this is, um, this is, uh, building orientation diagram for the string. Uh, we're on packet page 57, if you have the packet.
And this one, again, there hasn't been any change to the standard, to what's being required. What's been changed is we've added this diagram, and as you can see, there's not nearly the stringent requirements that there are for the pearls. You don't have the 50% requirement, silent on that. And the entrance requirement is just within 40 feet of the setback. So you don't have to have a primary entrance within 10 feet of the corner, uh, you just have to have your entrance within the 40-foot setback. Same requirement for vehicle access and parking behind the building, but not as stringent with the street, with the building frontage along the street.
So, Anne Marie, am I correct in the statement that the building requirements themselves between the string and the pearls are the same? And so when you're looking at a difference, so when you look at this, the two buildings are the same, but the difference between the string and the pearl is the setback of the building?
And the length.
And the length.
This diagram, they happen to show the building along the entire length of the street.
But it could be less.
But it could be less.
Okay.
And so that chop, this look then chops up the city again.
With the different requirement for the string versus the pearl. And then the high use.
Excellent. Any questions on this one? Okay, this is for the, um, building orientation for high-use streets, this would be packet page 57.
And if this looks familiar, that's because it is. It's, it's the same requirement for the high-use street that it is for the pearls. And that goes back to the, the 50% of the street frontage has to be occupied by buildings, you have the same building entrance within 10 feet of the right away and directly connected to the sidewalk.
So this would be roads off of 101, so this would be 51st?
It would.
No, that's a pearl.
It would be, I would have to look at the map. The map shows in yellow what is a high-use street. 51st is not.
It's a pearl.
Because that's in the pearl.
But Holmes Road?
I would have to.
House is Holmes Road in the pearl.
Um, I think it's a rural area, so I'm not, I'm not versed on it.
Well, it depends on what you're saying.
The, the pearls tend to only go, uh, maybe one block off of 101, so if Holmes Road is in the pearl, it wouldn't be further down Holmes Road.
Holmes Road's not included.
It's not in Wacom.
It's not high-use street.
So, question to send you guys more information, where are the high street uses?
14th Street.
That's your 14th?
Yeah, 14th is in a pearl.
21st is, I remember that on the map, because it's, there were some that were on the boundary of a pearl, so 21st by the beach access, and then right by the highway, but not in the middle of the street, it's the high-use street, which was kinda confusing, and just the beginning and end of it, how are people getting, from here to here?
It would be easy, yeah, we'll just make a list.
We'll send you up, what the high-use streets are. Okay. Any other questions on the high-use streets? Okay, the next one is view protection, and this is packet page 59, section 17.74.070.
And this is a brand-new requirement. This is not included in the current ordinance, uh, it's also not part of Ocean Lake, Nelscott, or T A F. But these are specific standards requiring a minimum 25-foot spacing between buildings in certain locations, and certain locations are outlined in 1774.070 as... All parcels with frontage along north-south streets. So any, any parcel with frontage along the north-south street, uh, when they're building, buildings will have to comply with this view requirement, meaning they cannot run a full length of building along here without breaking it up at least 25 feet at a 200-foot breaking point.
So where the purchase of CozyCo, where they're trying to build that out, into that five-story? into that five-story? Remember, do you remember when they came, presented to us at Citizens Committee?
Yeah.
So. Cozy Co. was up like northwest ninth. If you cut into Kylo, cut into Kylo's, you bed into that and turn right. As it goes up, there's a Best Western Cozy Co.
Yep.
And I thought, I think they're trying to do one gigantic hotel.
Yes, so under these.
Must they submit it before this?
Proposed standards, correct. Under these proposed standards, if they came in with an application after these were in effect, then they would have to have that twenty-five foot spacing for every.
But there's a twenty-five for what? For two or three?
For, so it's the maximum of two hundred feet. So you can have two hundred feet of building and then you've got to have a twenty-five foot wide space and then another two hundred foot.
That's within the Pearl District. Outside of Pearl District, it's three hundred feet.
It's more than a block. Our blocks kind of sort of on average two hundred feet. I don't know. I think, I'm just thinking of.
Do we have any violations?
On their two hundred feet each block.
Do we have any violations? Would, if this came into effect, would we have any violations right now?
It wouldn't be a violation.
I, I, I'm sorry.
But I see what you're saying. And we can certainly, we can certainly go out and.
Because then we're going to say, well, they can, so like.
But that would be a different, you know, they're on tribal land. A building like that being as long on the north to south street. I don't know. Just as I think of right, it was just being long, so we have to flip this.
Heather, if you want, then I know the law. Law's longer than two hundred feet. Although there is a break in the corners.
What, what street is it on though? Is it on?
One's building longer than two hundred?
Its address is 101.
No, no, but the building border is 101 and 12th.
So it's if it borders, not if it's on?
It is on 101.
It applies, view protection guidelines apply to all parcels with frontage along north-south streets.
So the east, west.
That's not a frontage, that's the rear of the building.
It still borders.
There used to be, there used to be a view spot there, then they filled it in.
I like this concept. I recently drove north and went by Rockaway Beach solid wall. You wouldn't even know the ocean's there. Very unattractive.
So Councilor.
I have a question on this. The ask was, would there be any non-compliance, you know, or not performing?
Right, or you put some in, non-performing.
Yeah, I made that with that. But I do have one question on this, that how does this apply? This applies to one development. But you could have, like, like we have with most of the city, those are six different developments. And so would the view board not, not work?
It would not actually, because the way this is written, it applies to all parcels. So if you had.
So if I'm looking at one, two, three, four, five.
Yeah, if your parcel wasn't two hundred feet long.
This would not apply.
That would need to be rewritten.
So I would end up with Rockaway.
It sounds like they're.
Other jurisdictions have done it with a percentage based upon the width of the parcel. So whether you've got a historic clap that's a twenty-five foot wide lot or a new one or a combination that has created five hundred feet of one large lot, you can do a percentage base as well, if that might work better for Lincoln City.
I don't really understand why the Pearls are used to designate a difference in view protection because the ocean is not really a part of a Pearl. And most of the Pearls, other than Ocean Lake, I don't know that any of them really come up to oceanfront property. I would think it would make more sense to have the two hundred feet along the oceanfront, because that's where you're really wanting to protect the view. Or Highway 101, have it designated as that, but the Pearls doesn't quite, or just have. Just one standard, makes sense to me.
So Harbor. This would not contain the Harbor. Yes, it's a commercial. It's a commercial zone. Is it not? And it's a north-south street? Same with Anchor. So it's not just 101 on this. You've got to think of anywhere where there's a commercial zone. So Anchor, Harbor, both have commercial parts to them.
Is it VR, a commercial zone?
No.
The second half of the question was, it shouldn't be designated just to a Pearl.
You mean the two, yeah, the two hundred feet? Yeah, I got that.
An ocean view is everything we have. About everything, but you know, a good portion of it.
So is that also just the view to the west? Or we talked about, and you'll go back to that a little bit more. And a east. In theory, if that was to be built, would it also be a view shed to the east?
It specifically references, the intent is scenic views of the Pacific Ocean.
So you think it should be to the east as well? No, it's really just a question. I was just thinking.
Either side of the highway.
There was discussion at the Work Study at Planning Commission last week about some changes to that intent. Though, do you want to speak to that briefly, Emery?
Oh, to add Seles Bay.
Right.
Yeah, to add Seles Bay, Seles River. And of course, the Pacific Ocean, and to be specific in naming.
The river. Any water feature.
Double lake.
Because those are iconic views and we don't want lot.
Really, every direction from here, we have scenic views.
The coastal, right? So that's what, not, not just saying only western view.
Oh, here's, here's the way, here's my recommendation. Maintain views to the Pacific Ocean, Seles Bay, Seles River, forested hillsides and coastal wharfs.
That's beautiful.
Keep sticking it.
Are we ready to go to the next one?
Yep.
Okay, this is pedestrian space diagram, packet page sixty-one. Section seventeen point seven four eight zero.
And this again is, the diagram is in addition. The diagram is in addition, the standards are not, there we go. The standards are existing by and large, the same. So in the Pearls, when there is new development, they have to devote three percent of the site to pedestrian space or common area. And within that three percent area, they, they need to have certain features. The diagram does not show any of the certain features. But the diagram does show that the pedestrian space has to be at least no, no dimension of less than eight feet minimum. And it has to be at least sixty-four square feet. You've got to have pedestrian access from the sidewalk, the street to sidewalk, through the site to the other side, which goes back to the inner connection between parcels. And then the diagram also shows the required pedestrian shelters. In this case, it's showing covered building entrances for both of the buildings. And I can give you a lot more of the specifics of what's required if you'd like. For instance, you have to provide one of the following or something similar to, such as tables, chairs, benches, planters, plaza space, extra wide sidewalk by at least six inches, public art, pedestrian scale lighting, dog stations, drinking fountains or similar.
There's a question that came up from a recent developer where we had this discussion. They actually are going forward with adding it. But the question they had is, does this make sense on every piece of property?
No.
Should we then have something in there that allows them, instead of, instead of putting the space in, to pay the equivalent to the city to thereby put it in elsewhere? See what I mean? See what I'm saying?
In the vicinity or just anywhere?
Probably in the vicinity, because we didn't go that far in the discussion. But the idea is you may have property where this doesn't really fit. And rather than just say, nope, you don't have to do it, or yep, you have to do it where it doesn't fit, should they be, have an alternative where they can pay into the city where it can then be used to purchase property to create that pedestrian space?
Would it be mandatory then? If you.
Yeah, you either do one or the other.
Okay.
Wouldn't that be this? Like existing in Old TAF where you could buy a parking spot or pay, if you couldn't look a parking spot on your property, you could pay X dollars. Something similar to that. My concern, I like the idea, I, I'm really concerned about proximity. Only we have parks and developing parks. So additional funding to keep those parks going makes sense to me. I get real concerned about adding all these little pocket parks or even pedestrian areas that we're going to have to maintain that we, the cities operate ongoing. So I like the flexibility, I like the subjectivity of it, but not a requirement, I guess, where? Where do money get from? It could be used anywhere.
Let's see, garbage business. It seems to be that pedestrian spaces was a pretty big part of the intent. And to have those spaces between buildings and to provide the visual relief, pedestrian resting areas and opportunities for socialization. If we don't require it and they have the option of just paying them, say, well, who's to say the city's going to own property or be able to acquire property in those areas? And if it's going somewhere else, then you're losing that entire intent of pathways between buildings and visual relief and pedestrians feeling like there's a place for them to sit if they want to park and walk and rest and, and that there's trash cans and bathrooms and things like that accessible for pedestrians, so.
Here, here.
I think they could always ask for an exception and have to go in front of a public body to ask to not conform to that, you know, or, or this, if it realistically doesn't work. But I think if we don't put it in there, then we're not going to see it happen.
Well, it can be flexible too, though. I mean, this is a very thoughtful list of different types of opportunities.
When was the last design standards made? Created?
I think I'm looking for you.
It's nineteen eighty-something.
That was the conference.
Well, it didn't get to this, but this would be out of bounds.
My point is that we're making a standard already a lot.
Yes.
Two thousand and seven.
What was the last design standard?
And at the time, just from a historical perspective, the Planning Commission at that time was half tied between, let's make it very standard and you have to do this and that and the other. And let's not just give them some ideas. And that's kind of how it ended up being somewhat wishful.
It was originally drafted in two thousand and seven and amended in two thousand and eleven.
And ultimately, three percent isn't that much. For, for instance, and I'll give you another real life example, which no one has seen yet because they haven't started constructing. But. The O'Reilly.
Oh, no, I'm talking about a different spot.
Yeah, O'Reilly has, they have a three percent and they have a, and it's lovely. It's on the plan anyway. It's a nice little pedestrian space right adjacent to the sidewalk. And they provided a few benches and some shade trees. And they have pedestrian lighting all the way around it. So, and it's, as I said, it's right next to the sidewalk, so it will combine with a bus stop. And, and it's easily three percent.
And didn't they say that? Emery?
The example of where it didn't work, it came up recently. And they went ahead and did it and they were able to figure out how to make it work. It will work for their business, but it's not really, it's not really conducive to pedestrian places. They'll do that. Sidewalk's down here, it's up on the top. They had a requirement to do that. They had asked us about, is there an option? There, there is not. And so they've been able to make it work, but it's not likely very many pedestrians are going to use that because it's so much higher.
Their clients are required.
Their clients are using it.
This kind of design really invites people into the building too.
I, I do think with the example of O'Reilly's, didn't they place it, there's actually an ocean view from where they're, they're sitting in, is in front of a public right of way?
I believe so, because I don't think there are any buildings on the other side.
I don't know what the business was before because it's been closed since.
The Auto Parts.
The Auto Parts store.
Restaurant. Oh, Lincoln Auto Parts, which was originally Cap'n, Cap'n Jones.
The next slide gives you some pictures that are included in it showing exactly what we're talking about. So these are some pedestrian spaces that you're, that you're looking at as examples. Those are actually in the code, the proposed code. So that, that's kind of what you're talking about, or two examples of it.
And the thing is about the pedestrian spots is it's really good for the businesses because people, you know, they get, they kind of want to sit down for a little bit, think about it and then maybe go out and buy, go back and buy a thing they're looking at. It's, and it's just really, and it's friendly. I really like it. Except we'd have to have a cover and shield.
And, and they have, well, yeah, their pedestrian space, thinking of O'Reilly, doesn't have any cover, but their entrances are covered. So that's what they're getting there, pedestrian shelter. They have an awning along the whole front of their building that then ties into the parking lot and pedestrian space.
Where are those two pictures?
The consultant did these pictures, so.
Looks like Cap'n.
Looks like Portland, Mississippi Street.
And that, that does, yeah, that, that one looks like Portland. And you're right, it does look like Mississippi Street. And this one does look like Cap'n.
Those, those signs, that's what I was thinking about earlier too. It's like, here's what's here, this, this strip, and you know.
But just remember maintenance, that's probably a complex owner, so the landlord's taking care of that versus something you expect who to take care of?
Us, yeah.
Well, another example, another example of this locally is the Stiles Town Market.
A sign like that, that's like if you really have to switch out business name if something changes, something affordable to maintain. Yeah, it looks really nice and then.
These are some examples that are in the ordinance of landscaping.
With city water, I hope.
These are examples showing the parking lot. The strip between, between parking stalls is a stormwater. Water quality, bioswales.
Is that our, is that our bus parking lot down there? Is there carbon sink plants, carbon sink plants that you could recommend? Where the buses are, but I'm not, I don't recognize that.
The other thing I wanted to mention about, if you could back up to your pedestrian, check up one. The other thing is the vegetation. It softens everything up. Yeah, and I think that's also in the intent, a lot more vegetation along the highway invisible. And that's something I feel is just starkly missing in Ocean Lake. I think it's probably what makes the feather banner stand out so much is there are no trees, there's no regular vegetation along or planter boxes. And if there's some way to encourage that, I'd make a big difference.
All right, the next one we have, this is D-Lake Design Elements, packet page, I'm sorry, Waco Man Design Elements, packet page sixty-six.
And this is the, it, it describes the intent statement that was. It describes the intent statement that was added to specify Wacomah because Wacomah does not have its own chapter, like Ocean Lake, Nelskott, and Taft. So, and I'm just going to read you the intent statement that was added to chapter seventeen seventy-four for Wacomah, or that will be added. Building design must embrace historic roadside, commercial, or small-scale cottage architecture found throughout Wacomah and continue architectural detail along all façades facing a public street. And then the diagram gives you examples of those, so.
So where do you tie your force up?
Just kidding.
Would you like us to add hitching posts as one of the requirements? So, as you can see, it has extensive ground floor windows, which ties into the transparency requirements, multiple entrances. So there's the multiple entrances with hardly any blank wall space. And that just ties into the kind of the neighborhood cottagey feel that we're hoping to see in Wacomah. If you're doing a flat roof or asking for some cornices, just to provide some variation, the symmetrical here, I'll just read it, symmetrical building sign resembles historic roadside commercial architecture, which is shown, or a pitched roof with dormers resembling historic cottages. We've got upper story windows aligning vertically with the ground floor, that's more aesthetically pleasing, with the ground floor entrances and windows, I should say. And then we have a continuous wraparound awning, again, that gives pedestrian shelter or encourages more of that pedestrian connectivity, friendliness to pedestrians. And then the building design addresses all sides that face the public street so that we don't have just the front with all of this nice stuff. And then you've got a side that also faces the street and this huge blank wall. So that is another one of the purposes of the design standards.
Was this, you know, we don't have a sister's plan, okay? So we're not trying to do Western County. But we're essentially saying, look, we want it to look historic. And that one description says historic ways and cottages. And so is that something that a consultant said, is that the general consensus of the community? You know, because if we're trying to say, hey, your new building has to look old. You know what I mean? What are we going to do? Really?
Also the word contemporary is used a lot in the same thing.
It's really, it's not.
What do we mean by contemporary if we needed to make it historic?
At all.
And this specifically applies to Wacomah, this intent statement. And again, it's an intent, it's not a mandatory requirement. If the mandatory requirements are listed as sixty percent transparency, the type of roof, the modulation, if you can't meet one of those, then you request an adjustment.
But we're taking the time to say, hey, this is the suggested look. This is what we would like. So if we're not going to make it, you know, the standard, then what are we doing? You know, I don't know.
So if you turn it.
I would like to see a more, I would like to see a more uniformed or more concise or consistent. Thank you, Lenny. You know, description of these, what these buildings could look, or have it be more substantial, you know, not just a.
Now, one of the things that, so. Let me make sure I get this, let me make sure I understand this. When you go from intent to it's going to happen, then you're going to make your restriction, you're going to make your requirements more restrictive. And so are you saying that we want it to be a specific look? And we're willing to put into this ordinance the requirements that make it look that way?
I am saying, we need to figure something out. To say, look, the city is going to look like this, historic cottages, new buildings that look old, okay? Or, eh, it's kind of whatever you want. And we'll just kind of suggest and that it's not, I don't feel like it's a very strong statement. And we're a strong city that has a lot of history and we're just kind of like, eh, here you go. I mean, kind, if you could be so kind, it would be nice if, I don't, why are we even doing that?
Okay.
Do you like the buildings from Taft to Wacomah to look like a large Sixters main grid that you go through?
I don't have, I personally don't have a vision for Lincoln City. I think Lincoln City has the opportunity to make itself strong and uniform and whatever that might be. It's not for me to decide. But I think that if we're suggesting or making hints at, it certainly doesn't help us have this look of Lincoln City. That's all.
Wacomah was the most difficult pearl to figure out because it doesn't have a lot of historical character to it and it has a lot of larger site development than, I think maybe Sambo's is potentially the oldest building I could think of in that pearl. So there's a lot of opportunity to continue to flesh out Wacomah. However, the other standards, while the draft ordinance does say that building design must embrace the historic roadside, commercial, or small-scale cottage architecture, that's all it says right now for Wacomah and then all of the other standards that we've already reviewed apply. Dorchester, maybe.
Yes, I mean, if we're dancing around saying we want the city to look like it, and I feel we really want to say, hey, this is what we want to see.
The next one is Delake Design Elements, packet page sixty-six.
And this diagram reflects the intent statement that's been added for Delake. The intent statement that has been added is, building design must break up larger façades and repetitious design features to create an appearance of smaller scale buildings to emphasize a human scale while prioritizing architectural detail along any street-facing facade or where portions of the facade are visible from the street. So, in the diagram, I can't use the cursor. In the diagram, we have the landscaped, landscape setbacks along the building edges. We've got covered entrances. This is, this is one building, but as you can see, it is broken up with the step backs. So this wall plane is stepped back. And then we have this pitched roof with the gable ends over this area of wall plane, which breaks up this entire section. And so it makes this building look like one, two, three, four, five buildings, whereas it's one. And that is what the intent statement is referring to, is that they want the large buildings or the one building in Delake to be broken up to look like smaller buildings, even though they're one.
And is this, okay, so we're, at some point, we want to attract builders and developers. Are we creating building standards that are going to be very expensive to build? And if so, are there other ways in which to get this look cheaper and make that be the basis of our thing? Are we looking at the least cost?
The answer to your second question, I mean, I don't know. But the answer to your first question is yes. The more restrictions you put on, the more expensive it's going to be. So if you look at this, for example.
I see a ton of money right there.
If you look at this, for example, and you say, that's the look I want because it has, it has the pitched gable roof, it has the offset, but it can be brown or it can be green, it can be, it can be stucco or it can be aluminum siding or it can be whatever, because that's permitted. But you're going to get this look, but there's a lot of variable things in, and that's one look. If you were going to say, I want this all aluminum siding, I want it all blue, I want this to be the, a specific type of roofing, and I want to have this type of landscaping, and these all have to be a certain type of door entrance, then the more restrictions you get, the closer you're going to get to whatever look you want, but it's going to be more expensive. Okay, so when you're, so here's the balance. And we'll come back and give you guys some examples saying that this is in the proposed ordinance, this is what you will get as a look, what it will look like, it'll have pitched roof, but the roof can be this, 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 this type of material. The color can be this, this, this. But if you want to go farther than that to get an even greater look, so you want it to be all aluminum siding or you want it to be shingled or whatever type of siding, then those have to be built into the regulations.
I'm not talking about that. I'm actually saying, are we creating ordinances which will require very expensive buildings to build? And are we looking at lower to build building standards?
The answer is, the more regulations you put in, the more expensive it's going to be.
But your two examples both cost a lot of money. If you were saying either we're giving restrictions or not, it didn't address, are we looking at creating standards to allow for cost-efficient building? And I think the answer is not really.
And not necessarily. And I can say that personal experience, I'm having a houseboat right now in Indian Shores. And you can't have, I mean, you can't have a box. You have to provide some features to make it look aesthetically pleasing, yeah. It is, it is very, and I'm definitely on a budget. So, adding a few things, for instance, we added a gable. We added a gable at the peak of our roof that did not cost us anymore and it broke up that plane. We took our siding and we did mordant batten and we did lap and we did shingle. It broke up, it didn't cost anymore. So, and I know from developers and builders, yes, obviously, the more change you make in the roof form, that is more expensive. But adding some of the gables and the cornices, you can add, and those don't change your trust calculations or your trust design, and that's where your expense comes in. And that all, and that meets the standard.
You're cutting in eight feet going over, cutting out.
Well, that does.
So let me, let me give you examples of what I'm saying here. If you want that look on the right, that's going to be more expensive. But that look didn't just happen. That look happened because the city said, that's what you have to do. So the farther you, the more you want it to look a certain way and the more you're willing to put regulations in to make it look that way, the more expensive it's going to be. Now builders can find out, they can do a lot of different things, but the tighter the regulations, the more expensive.
Not necessarily, though. You don't have to have tighter regulations and it'd be, they're not mutually exclusive. You can have tight regulations that are cheap to build.
If I may, Councilor Hopland, we do still allow under this ordinance final siding, you know, lower costs.
And I understand.
But I think Riley, what's not up there is another picture, and I think there's a lot of discussion around Motel Six is a classic.
That's what started it all.
When it came in, you know, now, that was certainly meet the need and certainly it's, you know, I don't know that it's leaky, but maybe, but it sure is a pretty.
I understand. I'm just saying big picture.
Yeah, I know, so I think, you know, what I hear you saying is to make sure that whatever wording we use certainly pushes a developer into, you know, something more than the box. But being cognizant of, but I don't, I don't feel that we're adding expensive stuff that.
But are we? That's your feeling.
Yeah, it's not, I sort of, oh, right, that's what I'm saying.
Well, let me emphasize just one more time that the standards, which these are, the developer or the builder can request an adjustment or modification.
So then why are we making it a requirement?
Because then it's up to the reviewing body to, and that, that is very standard in all jurisdictions with design review. You have to have.
A way in which they can ask for.
Right. You have to have a baseline and then you have to have a way for them to.
I understand.
Okay, we're going to do one more on this, but then we've got to move on to the next one. All of this will be coming back. I've got four pages of notes and questions to send to you, information. But we do want to give you the diagram of what it looks like in Cutler City. This is packet page sixty-seven. Is that the right one? That is the right one.
Yeah. So the standard for Cutler City is, building design must conform to a smaller scale and emphasize residential character by incorporating elements such as a pitched roof form or wraparound awning and into create nature into the design scheme through use of natural materials and openings for landscaping. And before you ask me what use of natural materials and openings for landscaping is, we are, we're working on that language because that needs a little clarification. So we will go to the diagram and as you can see, this looks like a cute little cottage. Again, we've got our upper floor windows aligned vertically with our ground floor windows and entrances. We have landscaping integrated as, as the diagram says, a primary feature of this site design. We have a continuous awning. And the diagram shows the pitched roof, which the standard calls out. And again, we've got the building carnage divided by change in plan. And again, a number of windows on the ground floor to get that transparency requirement and break up that, the blank space. And that is the standard for Cutler City, that small residential type cottagey look and feel, which is what Cutler City, when you drive through the residential neighborhood, that's what it is now and that's what we think the city wants to see for Cutler City.
So before we jump into the third part of this meeting, which is on the villages, as you go through this, if there's more, if there's information that you need, let us know. If there's statements that you want to make, then let us know. Ultimately, we will begin, continue to go through the public process, which includes going to the planning commission, going to the city council. I do think the one thing that we should have more of is some road shows, getting it out to the public and talking to the public about it. We've had a little bit of public input, especially, we've had more public input in the signs than we have in the design standards. And we can, as we now get in an ordinance, it's really getting closer to being submitted to you. I think a couple of road shows would probably be a good thing.
When are the design standards scheduled coming for the planning commission pretty soon?
Do you know?
October fifteenth.
October fifteenth? What I would suggest is that you kind of continue that, let us answer some of these questions because I've got, like I said, four pages.
Pause phone or continue?
Is it a public hearing?
I think so.
Yeah, we can continue, we've already continued it several times, so we can.
I didn't hear the answer.
Oh, we've already continued it a few times. Sure, Berka, so you are correct, it is a public hearing and we would just put it on the agenda as a continuance and then you would make the motion.
Thanks.
But if you continue, give us a little bit of time, continue it for a little bit downward so we can make sure we get all of this information.
I was just going to say on page seventy, there are a couple more examples that you have. All of those?
Eight seventy, seven.
I think this is a good example for talking about design and signage at the same time. Different types of buildings, like you're talking about. Different types of buildings, like you're talking about. Both sides of the building on the right are street facing, so they have the windows and those sides. I don't know, I just, I like that. And the green. I mean, it just kind of fills everything all together again.
So, I guess the question I would have is, knowing that the planning commission is already continuing this public hearing on design standards, and I hear Lenny, and her point is a good one, you know, for city council, we're just heading hearing this for the first time. How do we get in all, a work session just on, you know, planning, or signs, or design standards? Because I think Riley's points are good, and the discussion back and forth. And we need, I think, an environment for us individually to better, to listen and work through some of this stuff before it pops to the public decision making.
We can certainly schedule another work meeting. We can do it so they're just on each one individually. We can do them jointly. We can do them by commission versus council. However you guys would like to do it.
Well, I personally enjoy with the commission, because they're having to deal, and might as well hear it all at the same time. And I appreciate the discussion back and forth from everybody. And I, I know we, at council, have got some work sessions, hard scheduled with topics, but, you know, to me, this is, again, a fit I have, is we gin this thing up now and don't ever seem to finish it. You know, go on to the next subject, and then, and I'm old enough where I can't remember it. So I guess I would like this, you know, propose that we, you know, either work our, the work sessions that we've got scheduled, council, you know, that we hit these three items so we can get them to at least, you know, we're, we're well ready to make some decisions.
Maybe we need sort of a master plan, so I'm going to have the public hearing for the design standards in November. Before then, we're going to have two or three work sessions that deals exclusively with design standards. So we're going to all come together and sort of work through it. Before we begin commission, public process, public input process.
And I, I don't want to be presumptuous, but from staff perspective, I love this. Because, no, seriously, because we're the ones that have to interpret the ordinance, and, and the people go out and build it, and then if city, a commissioner or city council says, how did this get built that way? Well, Anne Marie said it was okay. So I love the input from you guys to be able to craft the ordinance.
I just want to add that I love this design discussion, and I really like having these joint work sessions. And I would not separate my request that we don't separate the signage from the design, because again, on page seventy-one, there's more photos of, of design elements. We've been talking about vegetation and how welcoming that is, that's, those are my words. And signage. I mean, there's example after example, I just, I don't think we should separate the two.
Yeah, or design standards should come before consideration of design standards.
So I remember one thing. Lincoln City used to have, and maybe it was twenty years ago, those type of signs on light bulbs going into the city and all up and down the city. And I haven't seen them in eight or ten or twelve years. They have either been ruled illegal because it hangs over a state highway or something. I was wondering, does your pearl identify?
Yeah, that's what they were. Okay. Mr. Mayor, we're ready to... Okay, this next one is on the villages. This has been to the planning commission. They have made their recommendations. You have that in the packet. There's, there's really just two things we want to discuss today to bring to your attention. We do not want to get into the details of this. We'll do, the planning commission's already made their recommendations. We don't need to waste their time. And so we just want, we'll bring the details back to the city council. But there are two things that we need to bring to you. The first one is in, there are two maps that are associated with this, and it's important to understand the purposes of the two maps. Richard, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. I mean, if, since the planning commission has already made an recommendation to the city council on this issue, should we participate in this discussion, or should we...
I'll leave that up to the mayor.
Is there a legal reason?
There would be in a public hearing. It was asked by a student lawyer, and he said, you cannot come in front of another public hearing as a planning commissioner and testify. That's what you said, didn't you? I forgot you were here.
We need you.
Well, this is your work session. You invited the planning commission to come. So they've already made their formal recommendation. They're not going to be making any motions.
Right. And no decisions are being made.
No decisions are being made. So the only caveat I would give is that if for some reason you remand this back to the planning commission, we'll take the record here and introduce it into the record of the legislature.
There's no harm doing it, you know, especially...
I think we're okay.
Okay. I just...
Thank you. So this is the map that you guys had us commissioned to repair, and it is essentially the future development of the villages. Basically, what this is, is a density map, okay? It's very similar to a comprehensive plan, a map that you will see, in that you have different colors that represent different levels of how much can be developed. So for example, this is, I think this was called the rural, the rural density development, which is very few houses that are done on this. This is the next step up. This is the next step. This is a commercial area. The streets that you see on air are not set in stone, but they are, they do give you an idea of where they go. If you recall, when this was brought before you initially, all of this area, we looked at saying, we're not going to decide this right now. We put it all in green, and it really created some confusion. It made it look like the whole area was going to be permanent open space, when most of it was, was, just, we'll decide this later. So this area is open space, or was, in other words, already been made open space, or is proposed open space. And then this area that we just highlighted here is just to be determined in the future as to what happens to it. Okay? So that's the first map that you see, which is the general guidance of what will be developed based on number of units. The zones that will come out of that will define what actually happens within the zones. Single-family dwellings, townhomes, cottages, businesses, so forth. These give you just the general idea of what they will be and what the densities will be. In other words, this is more dense than this, which is more dense than this. Okay? The second map that we have in here is a, it's the, it's our mixed-use map. This is really directed by the fact that the city has already a plan that is associated with this and provides more flexibility. So for example, all of this area is known as mixed residential, and this is known as mixed commercial. Is it commercial?
It's a resort.
It's a resort. Okay, thank you. In other words, so within this, this gives you a lot of flexibility as to what types of housing can go in there. This gives you some flexibility as to what happens in the commercial area. This one creates the flexibility. The other one is the underlying way of how you would see it developing. Okay? The best example I use is that under a density base, I could put four units per acre, but I want to put them all, I've got ten acres, but I want to put them all on one acre. I can do that under a mixed use, as long as I don't have more than what is permitted. Okay? Councilor?
I just, I just want clarification for those folks at home that might be watching, is that this is a big, broad vision for this area. It is not the zoning map that everybody in Lincoln City is aware of and uses. This is something new that, that is a planning tool that most other cities use. I just, I think people are really confused that there are two maps.
That's really important distinction to make. As all of you know, the city has had a comprehensive plan and zoning, comprehensive plan map and zoning map, which is the same document. Okay? This splits it out, okay? This is, is really what you refer to as a comprehensive plan, upon which the zoning districts will be created. Okay? So all the details that you see of the zoning ordinance, that will come later. All right. Now, the other thing, and we're going to really turn this over to Richard to talk about. We're not going to, like I said, we're not going to be going into the details of this. We'll be bringing, because it's already been through the planning commission, we'll be bringing it back to you. But as Richard has talked with the staff, there's a, this was originally presented to the planning commission as one ordinance. There is a need to actually create it into four separate ordinances. So they're scheduled to come to you, city council, on Monday.
Oh, great.
So Monday, we will give you the details of, of the, of the proposal, of the recommendation by the city planning commission, and then Richard's going to talk about why we're splitting it into multiple ordinances.
That'll be good.
Okay. So this has already gone with the planning commission, and they saw one ordinance. Now, if you recall, the last city council meeting, we had first reading of the development agreement ordinance. And I said, it was unanimous, but we, I said, can we hold off on second reading till the next meeting? And that was because I wanted this ordinance to catch up. Well, because, because there's a little section in this ordinance that talks about amending the comprehensive plan to authorize development agreements to do certain things. So rather than have the development agreement ordinance get held up, and if this gets held up, I've taken that out, made it separate ordinance number thirty-two. So that very discreet thing about development agreements can go forward, and then the development agreement ordinance can go forward. So I tweaked the language a little bit to make it a little more generic and not specifically relate to this, and that's in a separate ordinance. So that's the first thing. That's the easy one. Something that basically was in this ordinance that didn't really need to be, could have been a separate ordinance all along, is now pulled out, and we'll go forward authorizing development agreements to do the kind of things that we said they can do in the development agreement ordinance, which you've already had first reading. Now, the second part, well, the second part is the creation part. And then the third and fourth part is the application. So what we're going to do is create two future land use map designations, okay? Two flume designations. One is called Recreation Resort Mixed Use, and that's the red one. And the other one is called Resort Residential Mixed Structure, and that's everything else.
There's a red one, it's brown.
So again, I know we're pointing at a map right now, but right, what I'm saying is, I'm writing text, putting it into the comprehensive plan that says, we're creating this new future land use map designation. We're just creating it. Just like back years ago when we just created the VR zone, we didn't apply it anywhere, we just created it. We put it in the comp plan text, and we went to the legend of the map down in the corner, and we said, hey, you know what these colors mean? Here's what the color means. And that's, that's all we're doing to the map with that ordinance. We're just creating the text. We're just putting it in the legend. We're not applying it. We're not applying it here in that second ordinance. We're just creating it. So I took out the things that were specific to this area, where the road accesses and things like that. That's part of the process of applying it. So the question is, what is it, well, what does it do? Well, the, the one in the center, the Captain Marvel one, I'll say, is that, that one is a mixed-use commercial kind of land use designation that will almost be a resort-type employment center. Okay? It'll have uses that we have drafted, just haven't sent out, the zoning that implements this. And we came up with a name, Resort Community Commercial is the, the name for that. We could have others, but that's, but zoning that'll implement the Resort Residential Mixed, I'm sorry, the Resort Recreation Resort Mixed Use will be implemented with the Resort Community Commercial.
Let me jump in here real quick, Richard. What did he say? One of the, I want to kind of emphasize what he's saying, because he kind of gave me a look that said, Ron, you don't know what you're talking about. Okay? I want to make sure that everybody understands what he's talking about. When I was pointing to these maps, I was talking about the application of what he is now talking about upon those properties. However, what he's really talking about is that those, that recreational resort and the other one can be applied anywhere in the city. Someone can come and apply for it. So while I've been talking about this, you guys need to think it in a much broader sense of saying, this ordinance will allow this zone to be used anywhere in the city. One of the dangers, and fall right into it, is to think of a zone only as it pertains to a specific area of the city. It's easy to do that, because we already have a map, and we know what we want to do with this property. But Richard is just dead on that this, that the creation of these uses can happen anywhere in the city, and you need to think of it in that way.
And the gist of the substance of these two would be the, the mixed-use one, the one that's got a kind of commercial element to it, a resort commercial. That, that one, in order to get that, you have to donate like a percentage of open space, a hundred and fifty percent of what the land area that you're applying for. So if you apply it to this map up here, you know, the acreage of the knoll is a hundred and fifty percent of the acreage that we are requesting in the third ordinance to change the designation. So in order, so if you go out and Nelscott, and you say, hey, I'd like to get that designation here, you better be dedicating a hundred and fifty percent of your property acreage as open spacing and rezoning it to open space and putting a conservation easement on. So that's the price to pay to get that really cool commercial resort kind of designation. And part of that price is we're trying to show DLCD. This isn't easy. Look, we're just giving ourselves something, aren't we, aren't we great? You know, we're showing them, you got to work for this designation.
It's a big deal then, in other words. I mean, you can't just throw that in any part of the city. It has to be an area with a lot of the recreation, open space that goes along with the resort.
And in terms of locationally, it needs to be tied with some pretty high-density residential. And so although it doesn't have to be the residential mixed structure designation, that designation has a price to pay as well. That requires twenty percent of the units have to meet a hundred and twenty-five percent of median income and affordability standard.
Planning commission changed that to twenty-five percent, and seventy-five.
It did change it. And it says minimum.
That's the old order. Yes, that's not the...
So we did change it to twenty-five.
Okay. Someone's got to help me out with that, but I had it as up to a hundred and twenty-five percent was what I thought we left it with.
Correct, but a minimum of twenty-five percent of the units. They updated from the original proposal.
Original twenty, twenty-five. Okay. Well, it was originally thirty, and then city staff recommended, because twenty percent of the purchase price or a... the purchase price, or of the money of the purchase price of the property was affordable housing money, that that should translate to 20% of what is built in the future.
But you're talking about.
I didn't like seeing two and two tying together, and I don't like it, I think here, it says very specifically that long-term housing is the goal of the land use designation that is being created, I didn't like seeing that lowered, but that was just personal, but that's why we ended up meeting in the middle at 20.
And that's what we're really getting into, the details part of it, and we wanted to talk more about what Richard's doing as far as dividing them up.
The, this, again, is the creation, in order to meet it, we, you need to have, I guess, 25% of your units meet this affordability standard of up to 125, but we're not talking about the village's property and what, you know, the fact that low-income money was used to buy part of that, that's, that's part of, that's not part of this, okay, this is just the creation part, so, once we get through the creation, uh, we have to apply it into two specific properties, one of the center, the red core area, and then the, uh, the larger area, again, uh, that's kind of the easy part, in the sense that, that's a short ordinance that says, we are changing the designation, uh, or actually, I keep referring to this as the blanket you put down for your picnic, we're putting a blanket underneath, uh, the potato salad, which is the, the section in the center there, and so that, it, it's the land use designation goes under the zoning, so the blanket goes under the potato salad or chicken pepper, so, um, that's, we're basically gonna put the blanket down underneath what's already there, the thing to remember is, normally, if you change the zoning, uh, or land use designation of a piece of property, you're pretty much wiping out prior land development approvals, but because the way we wrote this is, this is, uh, land use designation goes underneath, and it can be implemented with the R1, R1 7.5 specifically, and that's what the villages is, R1 7.5 with some open space, we said it can be implemented with R1 7.5 in open space, so it's not inconsistent with the existing development approval, so we don't lose that value until we rezone it, so right now, we're just talking about putting the land use designation underneath, we're not talking about applying, uh, the zoning right now, when you come to applying the zoning, you're gonna lose the development approval at least for the parcels that you rezone, and then that gets into, we gotta amend the master plan and redistribute the units and things like that, but at least for this map application, we're not gonna violate the underlying land use approval.
So again, in kind of summary of all that we're talking about, is this is going to the city council, first, we have stayed true to the planning commission's recommendation, so I want to assure the planning commission, we are not changing your recommendation, we're splitting them up into multiple ordinances for the reason that Richard discussed, the first ordinances that he discussed deal with applying it anywhere in the city, okay? And those need to be thought of, do you want this kind of designation anywhere in the city, and then that will also include the, the requirements for the affordable housing, the requirements for the open space, and everything else, okay? Then you get into the application of it specifically to, uh, to the villages, okay? So it's really important that you keep those distinctions, that when you're considering this, the planning commission's recommendation, you start by not even thinking of the villages, thinking of this as a zone like you would use it, or, I mean, a land use designation like you'd use anywhere else in the city, then, if you look at applying it specifically to the, uh, to the, uh, the, the village's property, now, for our planning commissioners, one thing that you guys would be helpful in, we think we're pretty certain that we have kept your, uh, recommendations, if, when the packet is published on Wednesday for the city council, if you took a look at this and find out that we missed on something, that would be great to know, we can then go back and check the minutes and check the reps to see if we actually missed on something, always great to have multiple eyes on things.
I'm just a bit confused at this point, though, does any, any effort that the city council makes in the near future designate any portion of the North Villages as one or, or the other of these two new zones?
Well, the, yes, the third and fourth ordinances are proposed to change the, to add a land use, future land use map designation underneath the existing zoning, it's not going to remove the existing zoning, we're gonna leave that alone until someone maybe wants to buy one of those parcels from us, then we can change it somewhere.
Until the zone's created, plus, as the zones are being created, um, some of us are really familiar with the plan that already exists, it's good until 2023, we want to make sure everybody understands that, so that you know what is already allowed when we purchased, uh, that property in the first place.
I think to simplify for the planning commission, the ordinance that you guys heard included, um, adding language about development agreements, doing a comprehensive plan text amendment, and a comprehensive plan map amendment, Mr. Appicello has split that up into different, so one, one ordinance will be doing the text for both of these districts, two ordinance will be, um, ordinances will be applying for the map amendment, and then the other one is addressing the language of the development agreement text, just to help you understand why it went from one to four.
Okay. Mr. Mayor? We're done?
Okay.
Unless there's questions. We do staff, unless there's questions. Statements, we don't have.
Yes, statements.
No questions, statements.
I know we're not looking to the exact text of ours, but I have a change I would like to request, I'm page 134, um, let me see, the one, two, third paragraph down, the last sentence reads, um, preservation of existing timber, shrubs, and ground cover, dot, 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 I would like to please request that we change the word timber to trees, because we are not wanting to see any crops here, and timber's a technical term for, where?
Page 134. In which paragraph?
It's line 22.
Line 22, change that to.
It starts with a land use, mentioned.
Change that to here.
So, change timber to trees?
Please.
Now, uh, now, how's that, what, what we will do is that we will make note of that in our staff report, because the planning commission has made a recommendation, we're not going to change the planning commission's recommendation, so we'll make note of that, that it was brought up, and then you'll have to act on that.
Well, I, I've probably used, and preparing for this, I reworded some things, so, you're gonna see some language changes, will, I thought I had the most recent version, but I may not have attached to the public hearing, but I track I have the most recent version, so I'll go back and check, and we'll double check, and we'll make sure that the planning commission's recommendation is carried forward, but there will be tweaks to the language, because just in the process of separating it into the four, I had to change.
But if you see things like this, um, like I said, on this one, I'll make note of it, um, but, but if it's not changed that Richard has from the planning commission, then you'll, you'll want to do that, okay, good, all right.
What we, planning commissioners, we get the packet, as everybody does on the Wednesday, then we'll have until Friday to get your comments, or what, do you have a deadline?
When the meeting is, no, the meeting is Monday, so just.
I would request, I would request the planning commission for me the comments, I compile them all together for one.
By what time, by when?
Um, well, if you could get it to me by Friday, then I could have it ready and compile it on Monday in advance of the meeting.
And we'll just make a note that it's not the planning commission's recommendation, it's just your comments as requested by the council.
That's right.
From individual.
Yes, we will, yes, that is exactly right.
Is that the lawyership?
That's the lawyership.
Planning commission's recommendations are in this package.
I know it's correct.
Okay. Other questions? Want to, for, back to sign?
We've got another hour.
We've got to hang around until five, so.
You can sign now.
Not if you noticed it.
Before we leave, I just want to say to the planning commission, um, commissioners, you guys did a great job with, um, with these ordinances, like thinking them through and making, I've been watching it, and, um, making changes, people watch, anyway, I really appreciate your good thinking.
So, thank you for your time, you know, medal of the day, those who have businesses and work for a paycheck, uh, appreciate it, uh, thank you for coming, I apologize for my tardiness, um, I had a prior gait before this one.
Council president would do it Friday.
I know she would, so thank you, and I, I hope we can come, uh, work with Lenny's suggestion of some concentrated work sessions, and if you don't mind, uh, I'll always check with council, but you could extend, offer to the commission, uh, you know, like, when we're working on dual stuff, to do these work sessions all at the same time, I think that's helpful for all of us.
Well, I think one of the things you need to recognize is, when you finish all three of these, you are made a monumental set of changes.
Oh, right.
And things to this city, this is the biggest sweeping changes I've ever seen.
Yeah, and I echo what Lenny just said, that we'll be seeing the improvements from these ordinances 20, 30 years down the road, um, so, I, I think that it's good to take as much time as you need to, um, get into the weeds, ask the difficult questions, challenge staff, uh, that's, that's the importance of these.
Not too hard. All right, thank you for your time, so we stand adjourned.